Good evening. Welcome to West Covina City Council Meeting. And today is October 20th. Okay, right now it's 7:02 and our meeting in order. And tonight, the invocation will be led by Pastor Mason Akubo for Emmanuel First Lucellan Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegion led by Councilmember Shoemaker. All rise please. Have a seat, please. And Assistant City Clerk, Rocko, please.
Good evening. Councilman Castellanos. Councilman Johnson. Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Wu.
Here. And the city attorney, do you have anything we pull off on closed session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And we are going to the presentation tonight. Is county staff here? And our presentation, we're going to spend a little bit more time tonight for what? For the election. Where to vote, how to vote. And if you haven't received your ballot, what should you do? I receive a lot of people calling me the white gallant, but the husband hasn't received it. Yes, so I say, okay, maybe you can go to the county, to online, to request, or you can bring you a sample ballot and go to the precinct and to get your ballot and vote in person. So anyway, I think a lot of people is really confused. What should we do? And November 3rd, okay, we want everybody to vote. If you're a citizen, please vote. And when, how late to register to be a voter? And because November 3rd, this election is very important, and it's a time for you to speak up with anything you not happy at this, it's a time, okay, to use your ballot to have your right. So tonight, we're going to have our county, okay, feel to come over here again to give us a detail and make sure everybody have all the information, and we can have everybody to feel comfortable to vote and trust the system. I think a lot of people have doubt about this mail and the bowling park, somebody set a fire. How can we protect the right? And how can we? This is democracy of the United States. We want to make sure everybody exercise their right, and we have the right person to get elected. So anyway, okay, carry on and tell us all the question, and later on, we have a Q and A if any people have a question. Yeah, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mayor. Honorable counsel, thank you for this opportunity to speak and present to the good citizens of West Covina tonight. Definitely, as the mayor stated, in this time of misinformation, it's a great opportunity for us to get out as the county and get the right information to the folks, straight from the source. So I have a presentation for you tonight called Voting in a Time of Pandemic. This is something that none of us, hopefully, have ever experienced before, and hopefully none of us ever have to experience again. But I'm going to let you know what the county is doing to try and lay some fears and make sure we all turn out either at the polls or with our vote by mail ballots. So real quickly, LA County at a glance, you know, I've spoken here before, LA County is the largest, most diverse voting jurisdiction in the nation. It's made up of 10 million residents. Of that 10 million, we have about 6.1 million that are eligible to vote. And of that 6.1 million, we have 5.6 million that are actually registered. So we have a great registration rate in LA County. Comes out to what? Where are my math majors? 85, 88% up there. What we need to work on is getting that turnout up. So November general election in a snapshot, we are 5.5 million registered voters. Going back to April, when the pandemic first hit, when we first went into lockdown, that's when our Board of Supervisors was actually very proactive about approaching us and asking us, hey, or letting us know, we don't know how long this is going to go on. Do we have a way or a plan in place to provide voting to the public if we're still on lockdown? What's a safe way we could provide voting? Well, we determined that sending every registered voter, every registered voter, a vote by mail ballot. So every voter that was registered by the close of registration deadline, which was yesterday, October 19th, will receive a vote by mail ballot. Now, that does not preclude you from voting at the polls. We will still have in-person voting opportunities where we could do so safely. The biggest hurdle to that has been social distancing, right? So the small community center that we may have used in the past is no longer available. We can't fit enough staff members, voters, and voting devices in there with social distancing. So we moved on to larger locations. You may have seen, we're voting in places like the Hollywood Bowl, Kagan Patio out there, Dodger Stadium. So we have larger locations where we could spread people out and ensure social distancing. Voting starts, we will have the full 11-day voting per in-person voting period, and that starts this Saturday, October 24th. October 24th is the first day of voting. We'll have over 70 locations spread out across the county. And then on October 30th, which is a Friday, almost a week later, that number will bump up to about 800 vote centers across the county. And the key thing to remember about voting centers is that they offer you a place to vote regardless of where you live in the county. You are not tied to a home precinct anymore. You can go anywhere in the county, and you will still have access to your West Covina ballot. You will not be forced to vote provisionally. You will not miss out on local contests or measures. And then finally, we've updated our, or we've upped the number of drop boxes we have around the county. There's a couple of them right there. These are what the official drop boxes actually look like, fully branded by Los Angeles County, blue and yellow. During the primary, we had about 200, just over 200, 208 drop boxes around the county. For the general election, we bumped up that number to 400. There are 400 drop boxes. A few things we do want to remind voters is that when you are turning in your vote by mail ballot, whether you're submitting it via USPS, whether you're submitting it via one of our official drop boxes, or if you're dropping it off at any vote center during the voting period, please always remember to sign the back of your ballot. Your signature is key here, so please sign the back of your ballot. If someone else is dropping it off on your behalf, which is completely legal to do, they would have to sign the back of your ballot also. As I mentioned, it's okay, you know, the law says somebody else, it does not have to be a relative or a member of your household to drop off your ballot. But what I do caution folks is, please, only release that ballot to someone you absolutely know and trust. One thing we are promoting, folks, is please, you know, since we've started this, we've had USPS delays, right? This is something nobody foresaw. Nobody saw this coming. So the state has reacted to try and protect the voter a little more, and they've extended deadlines. Now, I mentioned that we started this process back in April spurred on by the proactiveness of our Board of Supervisors. At that time, they started, we started conversations with USPS right away, because we knew, hey, we typically send out about 3 million ballots, but now we're going to be sending out over 5 million, so let's have a conversation started. We have a soft commitment from USPS. It is their goal to deliver all election-related material, whether it's from the county to the voter or from the voter back to the county, within five to seven days. Now, on top of that, the state has stepped in and extended some of our deadlines. For example, in the past, we could only receive a vote by mail ballot as long as it was postmarked on Election Day, three days past the election. So Election Day is Tuesday, we could receive it up to the following Friday. However, for this election, the state has amended the law, and we now have the E-plus-17 law, meaning as long as your ballot is postmarked on November 3rd, we can accept it all the way up to November 20th. And our team does go down to USPS headquarters every day and picks up ballots. Interestingly enough, typically on a general election, back in 2016 and similar elections, we wind up with about one point, we process about 1.3 million vote by mail ballots. We've been processing for about two and a half weeks now, and we're already approaching 1 million ballots processed. Now, another thing the state has done to try and lay fears with the voters and to ensure that your vote by mail ballot is getting where it's supposed to go, is they've partnered with a company called BallotTraxx. And you can see their website there. It's California.BallotTraxx.net. Free service, super simple to sign up. All you need is a name, address, birth date, and provide either an email address if you want email alerts, or a cell phone number if you want text alerts. And you will receive alerts on the status of your ballot as it progresses from your home to the registrar's office to headquarters. Not unlike when you order something online, right? You'll get a notification saying, hey, your ballot has been received by USPS headquarters. Your ballot is enrode to RRCC, that type of thing. In lieu of that, you can always go to LAVote.net, and we also have a ballot lookup tool there. That one will give you a single alert. You simply click that, and it'll tell you whether your vote by mail ballot has been received and if it is eligible for counting. Now, we will not tally any ballots until polls close on 8:00 PM on November 3rd. That's when tally actually begins. So everything happening now is just processing the ballots, verifying signatures, and getting them ready for that. I mentioned we will have 11-day and five-day voting periods. If anybody's curious, you, every household should have already received a listing of all vote centers that are going to be live in LA County. Again, you can go to any vote center. You can find that listing also on LAVote.net. And on people's vote by mail ballots or sample ballot books, it will list, actually, your vote by mail ballot, it will list the three nearest locations. In addition to that, every registered voter should receive a postcard. Looks just like this one, that will tell you where your three nearest locations are. Again, I mentioned we will have in-person voting where we can do so safely. We will be using the new ballot marking devices that rolled out during the primary election. We've made some modifications to that. But again, this is a paper ballot, not connected to the internet in any way, shape, or form. Once it prints, it knows not who you voted for. Is that proper English? It doesn't know who you voted for. The memory is cleared after each voter, and for this election, after every voter, somebody will come up, wipe down, and sanitize the entire unit between voters. Something we implemented with that new voting system is what we call the interactive sample ballot. This comes in especially handy during a pandemic, where it's as close as we can get to a touchless in-person voting experience. And what this is, is you're able to sign up online and receive your vote by mail ballot electronically via email. Once you do that, you can get it on your phone or your PC. You have the option of pre-marking your choices on your phone or PC. Again, we're not voting over the internet, we're just pre-marking our choices, much the same way we would with a paper sample ballot. Once you're done, it will give you a QR code like you see on the center image there. You could print that out as this person has done, or you could just keep it resident on your cell phone, take a screen, a screen image and keep it there. Once you go to the vote center and check in, you simply scan that QR code, and your ballot will be populated according to how you chose at home. You have one chance then to make any last-minute changes on the screen, and when you're ready to go, you simply hit print, review your choices, and hit submit, and it'll suck the ballot right back up into a self-contained ballot box.
Phil, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For example, I received, okay, the vote by mail ballot. But I want to vote in person. So should I surrender, okay, when I write? What should I do? What the resident should do?
What we ask you to do is bring that vote by mail ballot to any vote center when you're ready to vote, and you simply surrender it when you check in. At that point, we'll spoil that ballot and we'll issue you a new ballot, in which case you vote on the ballot marking device on a standard paper ballot. Now, if someone shows up and they don't have their vote by mail ballot, they've forgotten it, they lost it, they don't know what happened to it, that's fine, still show up. When we see you don't have your ballot, we'll still go through the process of spoiling it. That way, if it does show up and it's scanned, we'll know that's a spoiled ballot, and we'll issue you a fresh ballot right there on the spot. Yes. This next slide is something that we're all a little too familiar with these days, and it's the COVID safety guidelines. But it is to ensure you that at every vote center that you're at, we will be enforcing all state and county mandates regarding COVID safety. Masks will be required at all vote centers. All vote center employees will be wearing masks and face shields in addition to gloves. If you do not have a mask, at every vote center, we'll have what's called a stop station. You'll be required to stop there before entering the vote center, and you will be offered a mask. We have sanitizer there, we have gloves, if you choose to have gloves also. All that will be provided by the county. So here's our timeline for the election. September 24th is when sample ballot books began mailing out. October 5th is when we started mailing out the vote by mail ballots. That's also when we began early voting at NORWAP headquarters. I don't know if anyone's willing to drive out to NORWAP for early voting, but it was available out there. And it was the first day that we opened up our ballot, our vote by mail ballot drop boxes. October 19th, which was yesterday, was the official close of registration. Now, we did have a box available at our office up until 11:59 PM to make sure everybody had an opportunity to get that last-minute registration in. However, if you know someone who's eligible to vote but did not register, they missed the deadline, they still have an option, thanks to the new voting system we've implemented and some changes according to the Voters' Choice Act that passed last year. You could walk into any vote center and take part in what we call conditional voter registration. This is what the public refers to as same-day voter registration. We will register you and provide you with a ballot on the spot. Now, on the backend, we still have to treat that ballot much the same way a provisional is treated. We have to verify your address, we have to verify your signature, all that other information before we can tally it. But again, that person who typically would have missed out because they missed a registration deadline now has an opportunity to cast a ballot. October 24th, that state is when all the vote centers open up. All vote centers across the county will be opened up from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM daily, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, with the exception of November 3rd, which has a traditional Election Day hours, traditional and legal, Election Day hours of 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Stay engaged. I mentioned today that I appreciate this opportunity to come out here and provide some information straight from the source. But if people do want other information, rather than having Lisa call me up every day and say, hey, Phil, are there any updates? I encourage you to follow our social media. For example, our Twitter account has long time been, hey, look, here's a picture of Phil's outreach team registering voters at the new citizen ceremony, and here they are at Dodger Stadium. But now, we've really shifted gears on that, and we've changed it to just information and how-to. So it's primarily key dates, here's what's happening now, keeping people up to date, putting out important information, any changes that may occur to the laws, extension of deadlines, which occurred as we were planning this, we would post those extensions of deadlines for folks. So that's the place where you want to go to get the most accurate, up-to-date information. And there we go. Now, I wanted to be a little bit quick, because I do want to have time. I understand council had some questions, so if the mayor wants to leave that.
Testing, testing.
Okay, let's go with council first. Okay, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
One of the, one of our senior resident messaged me, emailed me today in regards to the security of the ballot box. Obviously, we had the ballot box that burned in Balden Park, and she wanted to know are there cameras? What is the security and safeguard of her ballots?
So what we have is, we have in the locations where we placed him, for most places, we try and find a host location, right? Where we have someone in a nearby business, it's out in front of their store, something that keeps an eye on it. Unfortunately, just like mailboxes, some are going to be in parks, places where people traffic, high-traffic areas, but may not necessarily have somebody watching it 24/7. So we have to rely on people following the law, right? Just like a mailbox. Someone could do, have to do a mailbox, but we rely on people following the law. What happened in Baldwin Park is unfortunate. Someone just made themselves a felon. But at the same time, we immediately took action. We began an outreach campaign, starting from that area first and moving out from that, notifying people what happened and letting them know what their options were, providing them a phone number to call in. If they felt, hey, I had just dropped mine off there, I'm concerned, give us a call. We're going to be able to spoil that and reissue a new ballot. When we do reissue, that ballot goes out the same day, and what voters have been responding back is that they have been receiving it within five days, five to six days, actually.
And then you mentioned that they are picked up daily.
Yes.
So what time do they get picked up?
There's no exact time. We send out, there's 400 drop boxes. We send out many teams of folks to hit the county. They're picked up every 24 hours. So there's, I don't even know how many people it is, but it's hundreds of people that go out. It's never a solo person. They always go out at least a team of two. No one is ever alone with ballots. And like I said, the pickup is 24 hours. Unfortunately, we're like on a cable installation time. We're going to be there anytime between 1:00 and 5:00 PM, something like that.
It's 1:00 to 5:00 usually?
No, no, I was just throwing that out.
Even they could pick it up at night?
During the day, yes.
Okay. And then I had another resident ask, because their father and son has the same name, except son is junior, and they filled it out, but the, I think, one of them accidentally signed one of the ballot, but they scratched it off and corrected it. But they said, they're asking, is that okay to just scratch off and then put their correct signature for the correct?
That will be okay, because ballot intake goes a long way, and as long as that signature does match, we're going to say, oh, okay, this is obviously the person that signed it. Now, keep in mind, if your ballot signature doesn't match, if it's questioned, or like many people do, they mail it off and forget to sign it, we have a process for that. That does not automatically disqualify your ballot. For example, we use automatic signature verification, and the tolerances on that machine are very tight. It's very nitpicky. So if it says it's a good signature, great. The problem is, when it's that nitpicky, it's going to throw out someone like my grandmother, who was 96 years old. Her handwriting got a little shaky, right? So it may question that. By law, anything that that machine questions, we have to have a human verify. In LA County, because we are the largest in the nation, there's always a lot of eyes on us, despite, you know, whether there's the current election climate or not, there are a lot of eyes on us. So we always like to go above and beyond that. In LA County, our rule is if that machine questions a signature, we require three people to verify that signature. If all three question it, it's still not dead at that point. That day, a letter will go out to the voter explaining the situation. We were not able to verify your signature. Here's a signature box. Please carefully sign your signature, return it to us. If that matches what we have in our database, then we will count that ballot. So we give the voter every opportunity we can. And the deadline to receive that signature letter has also been extended. It actually goes to the end of the, I believe it's November 27th.
Thank you.
You got it.
Okay, Councilman Castellano.
What's the best and easiest way to correct any kind of mistakes? Registrations?
Registration? The easiest way to correct a registration mistake is just to simply reregister. That's the easiest way. Is that what you're talking about?
Little bit more complex than that. How about situations where, like, maybe duplicates occur, or duplicates with misspellings, or?
Sure.
I've heard of people receiving ballots that, for people they don't even know exist.
Sure. First thing you need to do is notify us right away. So first of all, if it's you receiving duplicates, one thing we'll do is we'll double-check. I've had this come up several times today from people that have moved. Say, oh, I'm renting out my own place, and I still got a ballot there. Well, we look it up in the system. It's because when they moved, they didn't reregister as they should, but they didn't register under the same name. They didn't use their middle initial. Or instead of Marilyn, they just put Mary on the second one. So when the computer is saying, well, Marilyn R. something lives here, and Mary something lives here, it looks like two different people. Once we're notified, we correct that immediately. All it takes is a simple letter. You can contact me, send me an email, I walk you through the process.
Yeah, definitely.
But we do it all the time.
Would like your contact info and the email address on the screen. That's a good one?
That's a good one also, but before we leave, I'm going to go ahead and leave Lisa with a number of my business cards for yourselves and for members of the community to go ahead and pick up. Give me a call. I am your conduit to the department.
Will do. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other council member question? No? Okay, I'm going to move on to the resident. You have, Jessica?
I thought of it based on a question that the Mayor Protem asked. It reminded me, when I went to get my license renewed, and they said, okay, you have to sign it exactly. Well, it was my 16-year-old signature versus my, like, 32-year-old signature. So when you send for verification, are people allowed to say, look, this is me, it just looks different because you have a 20-year-old signature? How, or is there a better way to correct it?
So the best way, if you're like many people, like myself, I have a work signature and my legal document signature, right? Work looks like my initials and a line. Legal document, it looks like the handwriting chart from fifth grade, right? I'm still signing the same way when I got my first bank account at 18 and all that. So I've maintained that.
I work in a law firm, so I call it my proof-of-service signature.
There you go. Same thing, same concept. So what we do is, every time someone registers, first off, registration does not get you jury duty. Let's put that out there right now. They use the same public database that we use, and that's a DMV. So the first time you register, we're verifying your signature against your DMV signature. Every subsequent time you register, we're recording that signature as your new signature. So you moved, you changed your name, changed your political party, reregistered, now we scan that, and we'll keep every signature on file. So it's highly possible that one day I walk in, and I decide, like, oh, I'm going to start signing the way I did when I was in high school, I'm having a little midlife crisis. Well, if my signature doesn't exactly match, that clerk has the ability to bring up all my signatures. And I say, oh, look, well, across the board, Phil's Ps are always the same. He has that signature letter there. Again, the law does not say it has to be an exact match. We're not handwriting analysts. But what it does say, it has to be a reasonable similarity, and that's what we're looking for to make that match.
Well, and I especially ask that since, like, I had to change my address. Well, now you just go on to LAVote.net and do it there, so you're not rewriting?
You're not rewriting your signature, yeah.
New signature.
And something you could do, and I'm sorry, government charges for everything, but I believe it's about three bucks, you could actually request a certified copy of your registration. Some people will tell me, like, I don't remember how I signed, Phil, I registered five years ago. It's like, well, you could request a certified copy for three bucks and verify how you sign. Or you could take two minutes, fill out a new reg form, give me a current signature, and we'll have that on file also. Yes.
Very good. Any other council member? Okay, very good. I can move on to the audience, but before that, I have a quick question. I think, okay, if somebody already moved out, but, okay, some of the vote by mail ballots still, okay, mailed to the, okay, old resident with a different spelling wrong, so how you deal with that situation? It's like, okay, people worry about why, okay, they send that kind of thing into, it's happened, because people calling me a baller.
They receive ballots from people that don't live there anymore. What we ask them to do is, A, we don't want them to turn in those ballots, because they make themselves felon.
Correct.
They want, we want them to notify us right away.
Just notify to LA County, say?
Notify us, yeah.
Okay, very good. And another thing I want to share with our resident, because, okay, and a lot of people, like me, all the time, we want to vote in person.
Sure.
Okay, and how many in our city ready to open? When is open? Where is the location? So maybe you don't have the information, maybe our Assistant City Clerk can share with the, our residents so they can vote in person? Okay, starting what day? And where is located? So all, entire resident, all can vote? Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. We have eight in-person vote centers here in the city of West Covina, and they open October 30th, five days before Election Day. And those centers are at the West Covina.
Five day will be, which day will be that?
October 30th.
October 30th, that will be what?
Friday.
Friday. So Friday, October 30th, we're open what time?
Eight, 10?
10:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
10 to 7.
That will continue.
Friday, October 30th, till November 3rd. Yeah, go ahead.
And on November 3rd, it's at?
Eight to seven. Eight AM, I'm sorry, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Seven to eight on the November 3rd.
Correct.
It will open for the location.
Yes, eight locations in the city of West Covina. We have the West Covina Library, Plaza West Covina, Cameron Park Community Center, Cortez Park Community and Senior Center, Shadow Oak Park Recreation Center, Orangewood Elementary School, VFW Post 8620, and San Jose Edison Academy.
Very good. So meaning we have eight, right? Eight location for our resident, like, like me, I prefer in person, I want to cast ballot, and hopefully you can have the approval, okay? And, yeah, go ahead.
Local in West Covina, but for the citizens, you could use any location across the county. So if you do find yourself out in Venice Beach for the day and you see a vote center there, you could pop in and you will have your West Covina ballot, all your home measures and contests.
Thank you so much, Phil. And any question from the audience? I think everybody vote already, they all vote already.
Everybody already cast their ballots.
Oh, my God. Okay, this is good. Thank you so much for participating. Okay, but thank you so much, Phil.
You, sir.
Okay, really appreciate it. Thank you so much. So once again, thank you, Phil, for calmed down the second time, but we really want to encourage everybody to vote. Okay, I think it's important, okay, for our resident to participate, okay, and choose the right person you prefer to win the position. Okay, and now we are going to move to oral communication. And regarding any people who want to talk about item number 14, okay, I think we should reserve that time, okay, for the resident to speak up, including the people calling. Okay, because we already have agenda on agenda number 14. So other than that, okay, for oral communication, nothing about the, okay, the agenda number 14, you are freely to speak. So, and how many speaker we have? So again, assistant city clerk, I think we hold those people regarding opposed or in favor of the agenda number 14, okay, including to let time we let them to speak for their agenda. Anything is not about the agenda number 14, then we are freely have them to speak up, okay, addressed to council. Go ahead.
I have three speaker cards that are not on item number 14, and I have two phone in.
Go ahead. We have agenda number 14 to talk about the gas station, the wine and ballot will be, so if you want to address the issue, and we are going to quickly finish all this, then agenda number 40 come up, you're free to talk about in favor or opposed. Okay, so because we have agenda, it's already designed for that. Okay, thank you. Okay, move on.
Our first speaker is Gabriel Rodriguez. Gabriel Rodriguez, followed by Mark Villanueva.
Good evening, everyone. Everyone, my name is Gabriel Rodriguez, and I've been a resident of West Covina since I was five years old. This city is my home, and that's why I'm here today to ask that agenda item number, agenda item number six be stricken from the consent calendar. Let's get this out of the way. This isn't about local control. This is about the city council's aversion to anything that could help our city's unhoused population. We are in the midst of a global pandemic. People can't afford to make their rents. People are unemployed. People are suffering. And instead of working with the state government to develop affordable housing that this council, this council would rather continue to build luxury apartments that people in West Covina can simply not afford. According to the 2019 ACS one-year income estimates for West Covina, 32% of households in West Covina are making less than $50,000 a year. That is not an income that can support these new housing units like the Colony or that new luxury senior center on Sunset. It is this exact demographic that is most vulnerable to experience homelessness at the end of this pandemic, as only 1.1% of people in West Covina in that income range own their homes. This initiative, California Cities for Local Control, are opposed to building the affordable housing units that not only this city, but the entire state will need in order to weather the storm of the upcoming eviction crisis. They would rather see our fellow residents of West Covina homeless than quote unquote ruin the character of our neighborhood. Let me ask you, what even is the character of our neighborhood? Is our character the gentrifying apartments like the Colony, which cost a minimum of $2,000 a month? Because that is not the West Covina I grew up in. We are not the other cities that have gone along with this shameful initiative. We are not Glendora or Beverly Hills. And I say that in the best light possible. This would usually be the part where I appeal to your empathy. However, the members of the city council have demonstrated that they lack that. They have abdicated any responsibility to help our unhoused population. I expected that Mayor Protem Lopez, as my representative, would have more empathy as she had at one point experienced homelessness. However, it seems, Mayor Protem, that as soon as you climbed out of that experience, you want to kick down the ladder so that no one else can do what you did. Let me end with this. This initiative hides behind the idea that they are protecting local control, but you are ignoring the fact that the thousands of citizens and as well as myself in West Covina voted for Assemblyman Rubio, I mean, Assemblywoman Rubio and Senator Rubio, both of whom voted in favor of increasing the amount of affordable housing in West Covina and across the state. This bill was our will. Do not pretend to be representing us here.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Mark Villanueva, followed by Steve Bennett.
Good evening, council. My name is Mark Villanueva. I am a new resident in West Covina, California as of August 2018. This is my daughter Madison Villanueva. She's five years old. And what I have to speak about today is really just something that I would hope gives positivity and, you know, some hope for the state of California as well, the state. My daughter was recently competing in a pageant for National American Miss, and she won last year. She was the, she won top 10 and was representing the city of West Covina. This year, she is actually representing the state. And for the week of Thanksgiving, she will be representing California in Florida, in Orlando, Florida, against several other queens who have just worked very hard for this. And I just wanted to, I just want to bring her up and kind of introduce her to everyone. We want to make sure that we can stay active and help with any local issues. And I also want to make sure that, you know, she has a good upbringing and she also stays active in the community. At this point, I make sure that she does volunteer work, especially at Shepherd's Food Pantry, where she helps pack food and deliver them to the less fortunate and disabled and seniors. And pretty much, I want to make sure that she can stay active and know all the council members, know the community, know all the faces, and that she, she understands that it's important to stay active in the community. So this is why I decided to bring her to this council meeting. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. It's kind of my first time up here. And yeah, that's about it. So if at all possible, I'd like for her to get involved in any kind of city events where we'd like to exude any kind of, or exemplify any kind of positivity or, you know, just something, something to smile at.
I think it's very good. Okay, and I want to invite you to come back in November 17. And the city, we will present a certificate to present to your daughter for her achievement. And I think she can say something that time. So are you, will you be available on the November 17? Okay, and we can arrange a presentation for you bring your daughter back. And we want the youngster to understand, adult, we do care about our children, and they are our future. So is that okay? You want to come back, November 17?
Yes, I believe we would, we would love to come back. As a matter of fact, the day after, we will be leaving for Florida, so I think it would be great.
Okay. Did you give the contact information to, to, to assistant city clerk? You got it already? Including the email and phone number? We will make a contact and we will present a certificate, and we want to have our proud youngster to understand we care about them. Thank you so much. Okay, I see you in November 17.
Thank you for your time, all.
Thank you. Okay, Madam, right? Okay, I'm going to see you November 17, okay? We're going to give you a certificate, okay? Congratulations. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Steve Bennett, followed by Minerva Avila.
Thanks, Mark. Steve Bennett, West Covina resident. That's very close to name. Mr. Mayor, staff, council members, you'll be hearing from me a little later as well, but I'm going to start off with some public comments right now. Tonight, you're talking about the either rescinding, restricting, or modifying the declaration of emergency powers of the city manager. Currently, there's two emergencies, I believe, that are on the books. One of these is the COVID emergency, which was done back in March or April. Then you have the fiscal emergency, which was done in May. Both of these give extreme amounts of power to the city manager. And I think the staff report, which is more of a sales pitch to keep him having those power, is very interesting. I have a hard time understanding why a city council member would be willing to give up their abilities to approve or disapprove of various topics that come up and allow the city manager some unilateral controls in relation to various topics. We've already seen, and I brought it up during the candidate forum, that he sent an email back in June saying that he was willing to sign a contract for LA County Fire Services on July 1, and that he was lobbying Hilda Salis and her office to allow him to do that without it going through LAFCO and without going through the proper channels at the county board of supervisors. That is an egregious abuse of power. And the fact that we have someone who is willing to do that, that you guys have not reined in those powers back, is amazing. The even bigger issue is, under those powers, he has the ability to renegotiate and force renegotiations with some of our union contracts. And as you guys know, you guys approved 12% raises for about 2.4 million between the two police and fire unions back in October, November of 19. Money that we couldn't afford, money that residents told you we couldn't afford, but the city manager said he'll find it through economic ways. Well, he hasn't found it, and because of that, we're deficit spending again. And those unions, those employee bargaining units have given back very little. So I don't think he has utilized his power in an area that he should have utilized his power. Those two employee bargaining units have given so little back of what they were given to, by you guys, that now you went to other employee bargaining units who didn't get anything and told them to give you money back. It's not right. And his unilateral control or unilateral ability is not being utilized in the proper way. And I just can't imagine, again, that any council member would be willing to give up the rights to make the decisions. You were elected to be here, four of you were elected to be here and make those decisions by the people. Whether I agree or disagree with your decision, you were still elected to that seat. And so you were the one that was supposed to make those decisions, and I believe you need to rescind both emergency powers or at least heavily restrict. Again, as I've said before, I understand the COVID one, that we're trying to get FEMA dollars. There's probably some restrictions we can put on his. But the fiscal emergency, we've been operating broke for years. And now we refinanced and got $10 million back in our rainy day fund. As he said, we're back to broke, so why are we still in a fiscal emergency? We should be back to normal. Maybe not spending, and hopefully you guys can control that, but that is where I stand on that, and I look forward to seeing you guys later on alcohol. Take care.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Minerva. Good evening, Minerva. This is Assistant City Clerk Lisa Sherrick. Is your speaking item on the public hearing or public comments?
It is on item 14, the gas.
On the public hearing. We're going to place you back on hold, and when we get to the public hearing item, I will ask you to speak at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Francis, can you unmute yourself? Francis, this is Assistant, Francis, this is Assistant City Clerk Lisa Sherrick. Can you let me know what your item is that you're speaking on?
I'd like to speak on the ordinance change for gas stations, I believe it's agenda item 14.
Wonderful. I'm going to put you back on mute, and when we get to item number 14, I will ask you to speak at that time, okay?
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay.
There, that's all the.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and any audience in person want to speak? And nothing? JD, come up. If anything, number, okay, agenda number 14, please wait for the public hearing. Yeah, go ahead, JD.
Good evening. Just a couple of questions and one suggestion to the city manager. My first question is, I was wondering why city councilman, Mr. Castellano, felt the need to have a private conversation regarding this declaration with the city manager and the attorney and not do it publicly? My second question has to do with Ms. Shoemaker's request for the city manager to provide proof of the need for the emergency declaration. So my question to you, ma'am, is, was that satisfied? And was it public and I just missed it? Finally, I'm wondering, since you announced, and I own a dog, and you announced that they're going to become knocking, have they thought about maybe doing it as they did previously? And that is hold a registration day at the park. It was quite a turnout, successful, convenient for certainly the older folks, and it was successful. So I think that maybe if you can reach out to the Humane Society and hopefully arrange that, the residents will appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, JD. Next speaker, please. Okay, any audience want to speak? Oh, yeah, go, yeah, go ahead. And would you please put a yellow call? Yeah.
Hello, my name is Sophia Shavira. I have been a resident of West Covina for 20 years. I'm a registered nurse and a graduate of Azusa Pacific University. The health and well-being of our community is very important to me. Physical health, emotional health, mental health. When our health suffers, we are unable to increase our capacity to become our best selves. When we are emotionally distraught, we cannot be there 100% for our families, for our community. This is why I served on the East Valley Community Health Center Board from 2008 to 2012. Today, I am reaching out on behalf of 142 residents of the Montero Point and South Hills Two HOA condominiums in West Covina. I am reaching out for empathy, comfort, and support in addressing a family in our community that is very unhealthy. This family not only has conflicts within its own unit, but this family strikes out at anyone that crosses their path. Since 2016, we have been the victims of a continuous and escalating course of conduct that we feel constitute race-based, anti-immigrant, ethnic, and gender-based discrimination. Individually, we have taken our complaints to both of our HOAs, Montero Point and South Hills Two, Surecare, the property management company for Montero Point, CMS Property Management for South Hills, the West Covina Police Department, Superior Court Judge John Slosson, and Mayor Tony Wu, who directed me back to the West Covina Police Department. Thus far, none of these entities or institutions have been willing or capable of stopping the course of conduct that is causing substantial emotional distress and a sense of dread and terror in our community. The inability of the West Covina Police Department to extinguish the Shoemaker family's vicious, vile acts has only emboldened this family's attacks on us 24/7. We are subject to annoyance, harassment, property damage, loud music, violence, threats of violence. The West Covina Police Department has given us 11 pages of over 75 calls from residents to the West Covina Police Department between January 21st, 2020, and October 7th, 2020, reports of harassment, bullying, intimidation, based on our residents' racial, ethnic, religious, gender preference, and immigrant status. The call log is evidence of a conduct of behavior that alarms and distresses us. The feeling that their behavior triggers in me is one that I experienced three decades ago, studying at an international college in 1979. I recall a bizarre encounter with an Englishman. We were sitting at a bar talking to my friends from Iran and Saudi Arabia when this red-faced man spit on me and shouted, "Why don't you go back to your country?" A few months after that, my friends and I were strolling down the cobblestone lane towards the International Student Center when a mob of National Front white supremists chanting "Get out" started chasing us. It was terrifying. My heart was beating out of my chest. Fast forward to 2020, and what do we hear again from this sick family? "Get out of the pool, Asians. Go back to your country, chinks. We're calling immigration on you wetbacks, you dirty beaners. Go back to your country. Get out of here, gays. No faggots here." Banging on a single woman's door, wearing a mask, yelling, "I'm going to kill you, you blank wetback. Go back to your country. Go back to your country. We're going to let our dogs out on you. Our dogs are going to bite you." 75 calls to the West Covina Police Department, and the result is only an escalation in the hate language and the hate violence. On October 1st, two Asian women with their six-year-old child were victims of the Shoemakers' two vicious dogs. Let off leash, biting one woman in the hand and back and seriously injuring her dog with bite wounds on its abdomen and both sides of its torso. The vet bill was $1,300 and continues to escalate. The police tell us, "Call your HOA." Mindy DePaolo of Surecare, the property management company, wrote, "Did the police explain how threats, dog attacks, throwing rocks through windows, breaking windows are not crimes? 2020 is full of surprises, I guess."
Could you write it up for 10 seconds, would you please? We, five minutes, everybody have five minutes. Can you write it up, please?
Wrap it up, yes. So what I'm asking the West Covina City Council to consider is an initiative to start a human relations committee to address this family. I don't think the West Covina Police Department are social workers, psychiatrists, or psychologists. We need to reach out and develop a committee to address this family that is terrorizing us.
Yep, thank you so much. Yep, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, uh, any other resident want to address to council? If not, I'm going to close over communication. Okay, thank you so much. Okay. And we move to consent, okay. City manager, do you want to respond some of the issue? Okay, and the resident, they just raised regarding the state of emergency and about your power. Can you explain about what kind of power you have? Okay, and what is the benefit for the city for you? And last time, last meeting, I think I will explain, we need some of the swift reaction to deal with the pandemic, to current situation. Go ahead, city manager.
Good evening, mayor and council, members of the public. I wanted to address a couple of the speakers, especially on that question about the resolution the council is being asked to consider tonight on your consent calendar, Agenda item number five, which would determine the need to further continue the local emergency. Just to give a little context, um, last week, I was asked to be a speaker at a conference of our own California Joint Powers Insurance Authority on a number of these topics. And it was really a privilege to represent our city at that, um, conference and on these topics. And I'll just highlight a couple of the things that I said that I think are germane to this question. West Covina is a city with many proud traditions and over its history, a very solid record of civic accomplishments. And one of the things that I touted to the attendees at this meeting was that this is the kind of community where residents are civically engaged and expect to get great municipal services. So the reason they asked me to speak is because I think West Covina has done a very good job of managing itself and conducting its business during this pandemic, which is not to say we've done anything right. In fact, we talked quite a bit about some lessons learned. There are a couple of points that I wanted to share. First, the most amazing thing about this field of public administration is the extent to which things which are known best practices in the literature aren't followed. The, the literature tells us clearly that disasters are by definition come-as-you-are parties. I'm going to talk about some of that under the city manager's report. But regarding this disaster declaration tonight, following council's direction at your last meeting, and in response to the public comments, we added some language to that declaration to make it more expressly clear what those powers are during a local emergency. The thing goes on for three or four pages, but I just want to read the section that was added so that everyone understands. While the local disaster emergency remains in effect, the city manager shall limit the exercise of the powers granted to the city manager as the director of emergency services during a proclaimed local emergency pursuant to the municipal code to actions directly related to responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. So it, it tightens it up, and this is a response to the direction that you gave. Most of the speakers wanted to speak on item 14.
And I think, uh, Steve Bennett, okay, you're talking about, you send an email regarding the county thing. I think people need know this need council approval, the, okay, and the city manager doesn't have a right to go to county. So you want to maybe elaborate a little bit?
Well, in order for the city to remain eligible to receive state and federal grants and aid, in fact, there was a new grant that just was announced today that I think we're going to be competitive for. We have to have a disaster declaration in place. And we've been going after grants and funding opportunities every single time they're presented to us. Personal protective equipment, um, quarantine trailers. We actually availed ourselves of the trailers that were given us when our, um, one of our employees needed a place to quarantine. And I think it's, it's been of benefit to the city to have those powers in place. I would recommend, as with all the other cities in our disaster area, that this be continued until statewide, this governor's proclamation concludes. The other one I wanted to respond to was JD's comments about, um, dog licenses and services at the park. It's a good suggestion. I'll follow up on that. We've been in conversation with them about some of that and how do you do that on a drive-up window basis without, you know, violating social distancing, et cetera? But I'll, I'll follow up. I, I take your point about the masks, so thank you for making that. I think that's all I've got tonight.
You have answered my question regarding Steve Bennett, Mr. Steve Bennett, talking about the email that you sent to, I don't even know anything regarding, okay, county, you send an email that, everybody know, they all have to come to the council to approve or deny, okay, okay, about the county, and they were still waiting for their number. So maybe you can explain to us, is that, why are you talking about the email? I don't receive or any, like, email with what you're talking about. Yeah, go ahead.
The, the process of consideration for, um, contracting with the county for fire services is lengthy and, and complicated. One of the required steps would be a consideration through the Local Agency Formation Commission, which is a governmental organization body that regulates these kind of things in the county. I don't remember a specific email where a council member and the city attorney and I talked about it, but that wouldn't be at all unusual. We did have a, a staff report in front of that body that was shared publicly, and I'd be happy to share it with anyone that's interested in it. That contract is pending analysis, which is continuing this afternoon. We had another two-hour meeting about our deficiencies in the fire station physically. At your meeting, a couple of meetings back, you approved some, some power protective equipment. But then we also know we've got substandard conditions with the physical buildings that we run out of. And so that's on its way back to you.
Okay, and I think the residents should understand, okay, and the city manager has no right to decide, okay, on the county, uh, okay, service about fire department, no right at all. They're right, okay, basically, we'll first, the county, if they have any, county have to provide the number. County have to do the community outreach, talk to the resident, show about how much saving, what service, to ease any of the doubt. So everything will go to the resident and then later on, go to the city council. So city manager has no right to decide all this big issue. All this issue will bring back to city council with the resident, okay, and, uh, pull it together and decide what is our next move. But anything, what is city manager or, okay, our fire department, okay, request something, then we open to see what the number with all the option. If the number is not there, not going to happen. So everything's there. So the city manager, I don't think, he, okay, he, he been doing this for 30 years. I think he understands clearly what is your power. Okay, yes, Councilman Castellano, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the chair and also ask our city manager and attorney for JD's question about, uh, the emergency power declaration. I had mentioned at the last meeting that we had discussed it. Uh, so I'll ask the, uh, city manager and attorney if it's normal and prudent for a council member to ask questions about pros and cons or any, uh, agenda items before the meeting.
I'll speak and then invite the attorney to speak as well. It's entirely reasonable and welcomed and expected. And I would encourage any resident that has a question, or certainly any council member that has a question about pending agenda business or business of the city, to ask of the team that's here to support you.
Thank you, Dave. And Tom?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, I would, I would agree with that. That's the chain of command. That's what we do. We're staff. We're here. We work for the city council.
I hope that answers your question, JD. Well, I gave you my card. You could email or call.
Okay, uh, let, let's move on. Okay, and, uh, so.
Mayor.
Okay, go ahead. Councilmember, okay, Shoemaker?
Okay, um, Jefferson. Basically, yeah, it's on. Can you hear me? Okay, there we go. Okay, um, my concern was assuaged by the fact that the council agreed to bring back the declaration to limit the powers. So there was, I mean, I understand the need as it keeps us in place to get funding for ongoing COVID supplies, materials, and things like that. And by limiting the power, we are taking the power back to the council. So instead of, um, negotiating contracts under the fiscal emergency and saying, "We're able to negotiate this because of this reason," now he can negotiate, but it can't be implemented, and then we ratify it comes to us first. So, um, I know it's not the exact answer you were looking for, but my concern was addressed. And the. Sorry, I have to listen. Okay. And then, um, the next thing I want to address is accusations by my neighbor. And I really didn't want to address this publicly because it's a private matter, and quite frankly, it's an issue of harassment. You know, it's quite interesting. Let's go through the logic here. Complaints to the HOA, they don't do anything. Complaints to the law enforcement, they supposedly don't do anything. Goes to court to get a restraining order. The court says, "No." What's the common thread there? The complaining party. So it's interesting to me that apparently we are so powerful that even the courts don't want to touch us. Think about it. As for the accusations of racism, I find that to be the most insulting thing of all. Because what she's doing is looking at me and saying, "She's a white person. She calls my family white, white trash and everything else." The simple fact is, we are many things. My dad's side of the family has been here since it was part of Mexico. My great-grandmother was born in Mexico City. I am Native American also. So accusations of racism against my own background is just idiotic. I sit on a council and was appointed by members of minority classes. My nieces and nephews, who she says are racist against Asians, one nephew that she's talking about is taking Mandarin in school and has actually practiced with Mayor Wu, who complimented him on his accent. They are also Asian themselves, from their dad's side of the family. So again, our family, you know, must be so full of self-hate that we are discriminatory and racist towards ourselves. So, again, this is a woman who calls the cops. If my nieces and nephews are riding their bikes on our street, a street she doesn't live on, she calls if they are playing in the hills around our complex. She calls if they are in their swimming pool. She calls if they are riding their bikes or scooters down the hill to pick up donuts or go to Taco Bell or to go to Tokyo Central. And I really, really didn't want to have to pollute this agency with this. But at some point, if I don't stand up for myself, who will?
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, council member Shoemaker. Yeah, go ahead. Could you, we need to move on.
Do it quickly. And for, uh, just a quick comment, for our first speaker, I, I think, um, item six, I think there may be a misunderstanding about what that's actually about. So if you would like to discuss it further or any of the topics you've mentioned, please send me an email and we could connect and I could discuss it with you.
Okay, uh, very good. Okay, uh, thank you, Councilman Castellano. I'm going to move on, consent calendar, one, two, 13. Any member want to pull, uh, which one? Uh, okay, uh, okay, you are not a council member.
No.
I'm talking about council member, you're the city manager.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, hold on. I got it, okay. Uh, you, no, fine. Okay, and.
Mr. Mayor, I think he's trying to interrupt because you may have skipped over the city manager's report.
City manager report would be after consent.
It was, it was so brief that you missed it.
We have a, I think it's consent calendar, then we go to the.
We're, we're, we're good.
Yeah, we're good, right?
When you're ready, I would like to pull something off the consent.
Okay, let, let me pull this, then I go to the city manager report. Because I don't think anything happened last week, so that's why I don't give you a report.
Why a week?
Yeah, I tried to cover myself. Yeah, I'm getting old. Okay, okay, consent calendar. Okay, who want to pull anything? Uh, uh, okay, you pull what? Eleven, okay, and, uh, no, no. And then anything for you? Number 10? Okay, number 10 from council member Shoemaker?
I'd like to pull number six, so.
Okay, number, number six. And I know city manager want to pull number four.
Thank you.
Am I right? Okay, so I will, I will, you like a book. Okay, so, okay, uh, we're done? Okay, so let's go to the city manager report. Go ahead.
Just a couple of brief things to share this evening, um, mayor and council. At your last meeting, you approved a package of measures that will save the city money on its power bill. And out of that savings, we're going to be able to pay for the improvements that are needed. Couple of roofs, some solar panels, HVAC systems, light bulbs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You directed me to shop for financing, and we've done so. We worked with a local bank who was unable to match the rate, which was in your packet. That was 4.15% for 20 years. We had a couple of banks, including Wells Fargo, who handles our demand deposit account, decline the opportunity. It's a very specialized kind of loan. The best rate I was able to find was, um, Bank of America has an energy services group based in Cincinnati, Ohio, and they were able to quote me, um, 16 and a half years at 2.3%, although those rates are climbing. I talked to that banker today and it's 2.34. But, um, in conversation with our finance director, uh, we've come to the conclusion that we're going to recommend to council that we, um, self-finance that. City finances have improved, and rather than pay any interest, we think we could do it just by paying for it out of, out of city funds. That's going to require some council action, which I'll place on your next agenda, but I want to keep you apprised. We're anxious to issue a notice to proceed, but we want to get the, the financing lined up. And even though 2.3% was lucrative, it pains us to pay any interest we can avoid. So I think we're going to come back with that. Our senior meals program, um, we got an additional grant, and we're going to be up to, um, providing meals that would be eaten, but not delivered, um, seven days a week. And so that program is moving along very well. We have moved, uh, or remain in what LA County classifies as a purple tier. We keep getting questions about whether this certain kind of business can open or can't open. For a small example, we had to curtail the bounce house at the Pumpkin Patch, which was parked in the parking lot of the Plaza West Covina. We thought because playgrounds were eligible, that that, as a private playground, would also be eligible, but the county health department is quite strict, and they had to take that down. So we're just going to continue to stay on top of this and encourage people to, um, wear masks and be socially distanced and all those usual things everybody's been hearing for months now. We are going to have an event at the Plaza West Covina. We talked about possibility of doing it in the park or having two events. We decided to support the businesses. We'd do it as a drive-through at the, at the mall. And so that is going to be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM on Friday, October 30th. And I think that's all I've got this evening. Thank you very much.
Yep, and, uh, maybe you should announce our, okay, uh, Plaza West Covina is open. Okay, and, uh, and I, I post a lot of pictures, okay, and a lot of shopper over there wear mask and waiting in the line. So welcome to shop, okay, West Covina, okay, and I think we needed all the help for all those businesses. So, okay, we move on. Thank you, city manager.
Mayor Wu, I actually have one quick question. I had a lot of residents, um, ask, how many people are they planning for, for this event? Because, um, in years past, it's been popular to go trick-or-treating at the mall, and a lot of times they run out of candy and things like that. And so, uh, people want to know basically how soon they need to get there and will there be enough supplies? I understand you may not know the answer to the question now, but.
Let me put that on my IOU list, if I may.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, um, okay. It's about time, okay? Oh, my God, I'm waiting for the time. Okay, uh, consent calendar. Uh, we're going to, uh, okay, and city manager pull, okay, Agenda number four. So we have a one, two, three, and, uh, number, okay. Okay, and then, uh, six, seven, eight, five, six, seven, eight, one, two, three. seven, eight, five, six, seven, eight, one, two, three. Number six pull, okay, and you pull number nine and eleven, right? Okay, number nine, you pull number nine too? Huh? Number nine?
Do you want me to make the motion? I move that we approve the consent calendar, removing items number six, nine, ten, and eleven from consent.
How about one, two, three? And the four, no, 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 okay, hold on, okay, let me, let me do my job, please. Calm down, okay. Okay, okay, so, okay, Mayor Protem want to pull number nine and eleven? Six, nine, eleven. So one, two, three, five, six, eight, okay, hold on, is it approved? Seven, eight, and ten?
No, I asked for ten, it was removed.
And you remove, you want to pull ten? Okay, okay, and, huh? No, on five, okay, who are going to move the motion for agenda one, two, three, five, seven, eight, and twelve? And number, okay, five, Councilman Johnson, vote no. And who are going to move the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Okay, and who's gonna second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve from Councilman Castellano, and we have a second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado, and roll call, please.
Mayor, we need to include item number thirteen also.
Okay, that will be include number thirteen, okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye, with a no on five.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, motion approved, five zero beside, the number five is four one, okay, and then we go to the first, pull number six. Okay, go ahead.
And I make a motion or suggestion that since we have people waiting in the audience and people waiting on the phone, that we move the public hearing for number fourteen up now and handle the other items after it?
We can delay if the council approve, okay, any objection for that, so we can move number fourteen first, then we go to six, nine, okay, eleven. So we can save the time, people over here don't have to listen to...
Yeah, I know that.
Okay, that's okay, okay, now we're going to the public hearing on the number fourteen, okay, regarding, okay, number fourteen, consideration of a code amendment, number twenty dash zero seven, to allow and regulate off sale, retail sale for off-site consumption of beer and wine as accessory to the service station, meaning gas station. The matter said for public hearing consists of an amendment to chapter twenty-six of West Covina Municipal Code related to alcohol sale at gas station, okay, or gasoline service station. City clerk verified the proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, Mayor, notice has been given.
Very good, okay, at this time, I should open the public hearing code amendment number twenty dash oh seven. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear from those in favor of, of the proposal, then those opposed. Mister Manager, Mister Company, city manager, who will present the staff report?
Joanne Burns, the city's planning manager, will be giving us this report.
Then go ahead, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, and also members of the public. I'll go ahead and go on and start off with a bit of background regarding the project or the issue. This issue was last considered in October 2019, but not adopted by the city council. The city council initiated the code amendment on September 1st, 2020. The, a public hearing notice was published in the newspaper and posted on the city's website on December 10th, 2020. Since it's been less than a year since this was last discussed, staff noticed the code amendment as a public hearing and presented the previous draft to the planning commission that the city council considered on October 2019. The planning commission adopted a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance to allow beer and wine sales in service station convenience stores as an accessory use with a conditional use permit, subject to certain performance standards. At the time of the planning commission public hearing, the items on the screen were presented by staff to the planning commission. The cit, the city currently has a total of forty-five places that have alcohol, that have active off-sale alcohol licenses within the city of West Covina, and this information was obtained from the California Alcoholic Beverage Control website. As far as gasoline stations with convenience stores in the city, there are twenty-one gasoline stations, all gasoline stations within the city have convenience stores. Staff does not have information on how many gasoline stations that are, that have convenience stores greater than 2,000 square feet. However, existing convenience stores that are less than 2,000 square feet can potentially be increased in size. Some gas stations have, have service space that are no longer being used, that can be converted into convenience store areas as well. With this, this concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you.
The, the planning commission recommended that the city council adopt the ordinance number twenty-four seventy-four. The city council has the option of approving the planning commission's recommendation or providing alternative direction to staff.
Okay, thank you, Joanne, okay, and before I move to oral communication, and any other council have a question, or you want to wait for the, oh, okay, so we are going to...
I have a question for Joanne.
Want to ask right now?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna ask Joanne a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The recommendation that came back from the planning commission, what was it? Can you tell me? Four one, five oh, what was it, to send it back to the city council?
I'm sorry, to clarify, were you, did you want to know the vote that the planning commission? Did, okay, let me go ahead and double check that.
I do see it says voted five oh, September 22nd, on the, on the agenda staff report. Is that correct?
It was, it was five oh.
Okay, okay, again, I want to open up the oral communication, and the council can do wait for the resident to speak up first, okay, then later on, we can have a question, okay, and then comment, follow through. So in that way, let's, that is, resident, they already here, to speak up, and then people waiting on the phone, okay, waiting in the lines, so they can address to council. So the first one, you want to go to the, in favor, or you want to go to, okay, opposition? Let's go to the in favor first.
There are none in favor, Mayor.
Huh?
There are none in favor.
So we don't have any speakers in favor? Okay, they have a...
Oh, actually, that's not true, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm going to, okay, I'm, hold on, I'm going to open, open up the overall, okay, communication for, okay, the resident to address, okay, to council regarding the item number fourteen. And the first, we are going to start with the people in favor, then after that, we have a people in opposition. So the person in favor, would you please go first? So who want to, want to go to the first one?
Mister Herb Redholtz, followed by Eddie Elder.
Yeah, go ahead. Herb, go first.
Yeah, good evening, Mister Mayor, councilmembers and staff and residents. Herb Redholtz, planning commissioner, city of West Covina. This particular item, let me just give you a little background, this is relatively simple. We took this up for one reason. This is, the word is parity. West Covina businesses, locally-run independent businesses, we're talking about the gas stations with convenience stores, this is to allow them to be able to have a level playing field and compete with neighboring cities with businesses that are similar to theirs. This has been on the books for many, many years, and it's, I'm asking you basically to complete the task and cross the finish line and approve this ordinance. We, what is in front of you tonight, quite clearly, we've offered you, I believe, twelve or thirteen conditions, and this is a menu of conditions. This is not an à la carte menu, you can't pick and choose which items you want to do, you've got to be in compliance with each and every one of them. This requires a conditional use permit. Anybody, any gas station operator who has a convenience store would have to apply, first off, to get a conditional use permit, which requires a public hearing in front of the planning commission. I know it says there's, you know, there's twenty-one gas stations, and they've all got some kind of convenience store in them. This is why we initiated and, and installed these restrictions. They're gonna have to come up here and be heard by the planning commission, and we'll hear from the public. I found it interesting at our, at our meeting back in September, that we had one individual who came up here and, and took us to task, because we were doing all of this for one person, one guy. Why are you doing all of this for one guy? Another speaker came up right after him and took us to task and chastised us, because overnight, twenty-one gas stations would morph into liquor stores overnight. So I was confused, are we doing it for one guy or twenty-one guys? I wasn't sure. But the bottom line is neither one of that's true, because each one requires a CUP and a public hearing. And again, it's about fairness, it's, this is a pro-West Covina business proposition. We have gas station operators that have been in this city for decades, that operate good, clean businesses. They're asking to be able to compete on a level playing field, and I think we owe them the opportunity to do that. And Councilman Johnson asked about the vote, you know, we've heard this, we've dealt with this, this ordinance many times over the years, and at our meeting on September 22nd, this was the very first time that we had a unanimous five oh vote on this. It's always been three to two, or four to one, or something, but this last time was five oh, which I was happy to see, because the planning commission, we, we heard from the public, we heard from the residents, we heard from the businesses and so forth. And I've talked to elected officials in neighboring cities about whether or not this is an issue, and it's not. It's not an issue. Nobody said to me, "My God, don't do that, you're, you're asking for trouble, it's a big, it, it's, it's gonna ruin your city," nobody said that. It's not true. And I'm kind of tired of, of scare tactics, which is what we've heard for the last several years on this, that, you know, if, if we allow this, that, you know, our women are gonna be molested, and people are gonna get robbed and beaten up, and there's no evidence to back that up. I see I've only got seventeen seconds left.
You use up all the time already.
I know, I know, I'm used to being on that side and having a free rein, but you know, it's hardly five minutes here, ten, nine, eight.
Only have a nine second left, eight seconds.
I know, I know.
Seven, six...
Anyway, I'm asking you, I know, you can count it. I'm asking you to finish the job and allow this to go through.
Thank you, thank you, Herb. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Eddie Elder.
Well, I've been here forty-five years in South Hills. Oh, by the way, I want to thank you for finally paving the streets. They were terrible, you know, there was more ruts in the streets than there are in a dirt racetrack, but anyhow, they're really nice. But we're in changing times, you know, when I moved here, I stopped at Charlie Barker Station, and, you know, they'd wash your windows, check your tire pressure, and you paid 29 cents for gas, and they didn't have anything else, we're at different times. And today, you go to the gas station, you want to turn around and run somewhere and get a bottle of wine, you know, it'd be nice to get it right there, instead of making another trip. You know, it's just seems like this should have been done a long time ago, it don't make sense to me, this is the third time I've been here. It don't make sense to me, or many of my neighbors, that why you can't stop at the gas station when you get gas and just pick up something incidental? A lot of times at the gas station, I'll pick up ice, you know, that's a convenience too. And so there's other things that are just, why they limit it and not beer and wine, they're not talking about hard alcohol. You know, sure, you could drive down the street four more blocks, find a parking spot, go in, but, but it's useless, it didn't make sense why you have to do that. So it only makes sense to me like that they approved this, and let's just get up with the modern times like everybody else, why should we be different? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Isaac Elston. I think he's in, he's coming, Mayor.
Yeah, would you please? Now who's following him? Do we have another speaker?
Following Isaac is Sally Morales.
Okay, would you please stand by? Okay, go ahead.
Mayor, yeah, I knew, being new to California and living in Covina, and then moving to West Covina, it was like a shock to me, I was living in Ca, in West, in Covina, and I could go to the gas station and handle anything and everything I needed to do, but then I moved across the street, and it just seems like everything is different, and I mean, it's a matter of fifty to a hundred feet, and it just, like the man said, we're in changing times. It seems like this is an older, more traditional type of thing, whereas if you want to catch up with the times, I mean, it's unfair that if I have a Sunoco here, I can't compete with the Sunoco across the street, because we're just across the street, now he's getting all my business, and we're, we're a hundred feet apart, because of a restriction that I, I mean, I really don't see a good reason for it in 2020. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you so much, and next speaker, please.
Sally Morales, followed by Oscar Tiscadero.
Hi.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sally Morales.
You can lower the mic, yeah.
Hi, I'm Sally Morales. I'm just here in favor of the, the selling of beer and wine at the gas station, and that's all I can say.
That's it? You want to say?
Thank you, yeah.
Want to say more, no?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you so much, you're so nice. Next speaker, please. Yeah, next speaker.
Oscar.
Oscar, yeah, and who is following him? Would you please?
Mayor, I have a Romi, and I don't have a, and it wasn't marked if it was in support or opposed.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Oscar Tiscorino with Extra Mile, so I'm a representative of Extra Mile here, so we have convenience stores here in West Covina, none of the stores sell beer, so it's, we recommend this, because we want a one, one-stop shop, you know, they come and get the gas, they come and get the cigarettes and the beer and the hot dogs, so I'm in favor of the city of West Covina approving this. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar, okay, next speaker, please. Okay, who's still in favor, anybody in favor, come, please, okay, and, yeah, and did you fill up the yellow car? No, okay, could you, after you're done, could you fill it up? Yeah, come, speak first, so we can save the time.
My name is Ed Rigazzi, I'm a lifelong resident of the West Covian area, been West Covina, Covina, all around. I'm speaking on behalf of the gas station owners, some of whom have been in these communities, like the gentleman said, thirty, forty years, they are members of the community, and they, they give back to the community in many ways. Some of them own service stations, genuine service stations, that do repairs and stuff like that, and have really become sewn into our community. And for West Covina not to allow these people to, to be able to compete with the other cities, like the gentleman said, is kind of absurd due to an archaic law. It's not like people are gonna be walking out of these gas stations with a sippy cup, drinking, you know, a bottle of beer, or... drinking, you know, a bottle of beer or chugging down a, a bottle of wine. So it's just kind of irresponsible of the city to put that kind of handicap on, on a local business. It's just kind of unfair. But I just want to let you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And any resident, audience, want to speak in favor? In favor? Okay, in favor, come.
Romi?
Romel.
Romel, okay.
Good evening, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Romel, come. Okay, and reason, I've been here, you know, several, several times. Lower? All over the mic, yeah. Yeah, the point is, I don't see any inconvenient why. We've been coming, you know, seven times. I hope we could go home early today. Lately, you've been going out, you know, almost eleven-thirty from the, this, but anyway, hmm, my question is, you know, the matter is the, the wine and beer, why? Not a sector to have it, I mean, a legal, legal, you know, uh, middle of, uh, license, you know, and, uh, particular gas station. I don't see any point, well, it's a reason because going that way or this way, that way, I see the schools, it's about a mile, mile and a half. And I never, I see any kit hanging around at the gas station, especially, I bike every day in the night time through that area and I don't see any kits at all. To me, I don't see the point really to, you know, basically sometimes I go, I grab, you know, a coffee and other stuff, you know, that I buy there. I got, I got a milk and go pump my gas and go home. Simple as that. And since I really, I want, I would like to drink something, it, it, it takes me a while to go someplace, you know, to really to get a beer, wine, whatever, and be in line on that, it's kind of stressful for me. It's simple to be in a gas station, we just grab it, put it in your trunk and go. Like I say, I don't see nobody around hanging around and drinking or trying to intimidate any younger, you know, to get some liquor from the place. So I think it'd be great for, for us, you know, to have that, you know, store, have that license, you know, for selling wine and beer.
Okay.
What's up for us?
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Yep, thank you so much. And next speaker in favor? Okay, go ahead. And did you fill out the yellow card?
Yeah. Hello, council, hello, mayor.
Go ahead.
My name is Tinder Shoker. Uh, my family has been operating a gas station here for the past twenty years. I would say the whole point for us, um, at the gas station, as Mr. Oscar said earlier, is, uh, we want to be a one-stop shop for the customer and we want to be able to offer convenience to the customer. And, uh, for us not being able to offer beer or wine to the customer, I mean, we hear every single day, I mean, I grew up at the stores, I'm twenty-five myself, and you hear it all the time, "Oh, you guys don't have beer because we're the one place out of all these cities like that they have normally gone to that we don't have beer or wine here." So we have to tell them to go simply right across the street to the Seven-Eleven where just because of sole fact that they don't sell gas, that they could sell beer. For us to have the alcohol license, I mean, obviously we have to obey the ABC laws too, right? We have to check for ID and, um, you know, there's a, the thirteen rules that they wrote, that they, uh, wrote out for you guys too, that we would also have to follow. I don't, you know, I think, I see us being just as responsible as like the local liquor store and the Seven-Eleven. So I would just like to say to approve us to allow us to sell alcohol.
Okay, thank you so much. And any speaker? Okay, going one, two, three. Okay, so we're going to the people, we, next one will be in opposition. Okay, let's go, have a first speaker, please.
Mayor, our first speaker is Mr. Steve Bennett. And while he comes down, uh, Mark Praseco is going to hand out emails that we received in the city clerk's office in opposition.
How many email we have?
I think it's two.
Two email, okay. So let's have, uh, the first speaker in opposition, okay? Who is going to go to first?
Steve Bennett, followed by Dana Sykes.
Okay, Steve?
Good evening again, council, Mr. Mayor, staff. So tonight you heard from one of our planning commissioners who brought up the, uh, it's all about one business. That was me. And let me explain that comment so that that planning commissioner can understand the logic that he is missing. It is one business owner who has applied for this continually, every couple of years. It is one business owner who has led the fight for this for years. It is one business owner that has contributed to campaigns to try to get this switched. That is the one business owner. Is it going to be twenty-one businesses or is it going to be one business? Well, as Mr. Redhold's pointed out, it does go through a CUP process. So let me ask a question. If an applicant applies for a CUP and he's granted that, and let's say two or three applicants are granted that, say four or five, pretty soon you set a precedent and when that one person is denied, you might get sued. You might have situations that come into play where, why did you not deny one? So what's to stop this? What's to stop the next council from saying, "Hey, you know what? This two thousand foot requirement, I don't like it. I'm going to remove that part. Now all of a sudden we can do more." The issue that you're dealing with tonight is an issue that's been in front of the city for years. And I agree, times are changing, things happen. But there's also things that are fabric of the city. And we've had our own fire department for years and all of a sudden we're talking about switching fire departments. That's a fabric of this city, having our own fire department. Even though I have the email that shows the city manager doing that that you asked about earlier, I'll show it to you. We have other things that are fabrics of the city. Suburban homes, no high-density living. We have one high-density place, really honestly, that's a mixed use, but for the most part, we have ranch-style housing in the city. That's the fabric of the city. Residents for years have supported the idea of not allowing beer and wine at gas stations. It's the fabric of the city. The people who voted for you guys, well, four of you, um, the issue you have is, is this the right time to make a decision like this? Well, personally, I don't want to see the decision changed. There are plenty of places to buy alcohol, it's not an issue. Same planning commissioner said it's about parity. So my question to you is, with the gas station next to Pacific Liquor, should we now allow Pacific Liquor to put gas station pumps in? That's parity. Let them compete on an even playing field. That's what we're, that's what we're talking about here, right? We want to give liquor stores the ability to give gas or do we want to give gas stations the ability to give liquor? That's parity. You want to give both the opportunity. Well, then let's, let's go back and let's open up more gas stations. Let's put gas stations right next to each other because when that gas station first opened, yeah, there might have been four on four corners back in the day and that has shrunk down, but the difference is, is they knew what they were dealing with when they opened their business. So that's parity. Parity is allowing everyone to do it. Maybe we should allow CVS to open a gas station. I mean, that's parity. That's what we're talking about. That's what that planning commissioner mentions. So I'm here tonight to ask you guys to listen to the residents. Hundreds of residents oppose this. No residents came forward and said, "I want this." They've maybe supported it if they even live in West Covina, which a few of them appear they have. But no resident came up and said, "Gosh, I really wish I could walk into a gas station and buy a can of beer or a three-pack or a six-pack." Not one. This was started because one business owner wants the law changed. One business owner. And the others are jumping on. This ordinance makes West Covina unique. It's part of the fabric of our city, like many other things that I've brought up. There's a, a great man that, that we all know and I've brought him up before, who fought this battle for years. And I wish he was here today to fight that battle again. And I will tell you that there are a number of residents standing out in this community saying, "I don't want this," who are not going to come here and speak. And I would be willing to bet that you're going to find out just how many that is. And my advice is, listen to your constituents. This is not something that is pro-business. We're talking about pennies on the dollar, not more than ten thousand dollars in tax revenue, if it's not a negative differential. This is not necessarily pro-business. It's pro-business for one specific type of business, and that is about twenty-one businesses in our city, and they're not going to increase sales and increase revenue to our city. I appreciate it tonight. Vote now.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Dana Sykes, followed by Frederick Sykes.
Dana? Okay. Now, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I, um, want to mention again Forrest Wilkins. Forrest Wilkins has fought this fight for years. We lost him this year and I was at his funeral and that man cared about the community and he put his heart and soul into this community. And he did that because he was a police officer. He knows alcohol and cars do not mix. You know, West Covina laws prohibits alcohol at gas stations. Let's be straight. One guy said he's been here for decades. They know this coming in. They've owned the station, they know they're not allowed to have the alcohol. You know, and they, you always hear, "Oh, we've got to be pro-business, pro-business." What about the small business owners with the liquor? So you're now telling them, because they, you know, quite often what you do is you look for a spot where you want to put your business at. You don't want too much competition around. So they put their spot next to a gas station because they're not pumping gas, they're selling liquor. Now we have the, um, gas station owners saying, "Well, hey, I want to sell liquor too." We have our law for a reason. We're supposed to be a bedroom community. Families, you're a family, you have family? We all have families. We come here to raise our, our family in a wholesome, nice community. Currently, we can't say that's always true because we have quite a bit of problems with the homeless. We have them in my park near me. Alcohol attracts homeless. Uh, just, uh, go to the ninety-nine cent store, they sell cheap wine and beer, which is what those gas stations will be selling. Okay? Go in there and see if, if you see a homeless person walking around the ninety-nine cent store. I do. Okay, so it's not going to be a, a plus. You know, pumping gas and, um, you know, first of all, a pervy, a person that spoke at a, um, planning commission meeting about the fact that he could pump gas, walk next door to the gas station, um, to the liquor store and get a beer while his gas is pumping. Well, that right there proves we're saturated. We're number two. Number two in the San Gabriel Valley in liquor, liquor establishments. Only one that has more is El Monte. And it's amazing how Glendora, which is quite, the same size city as us, has at least a po- probably about a third of what we have. I would rather be like Glendora than El Monte. Okay, another person talked about, um, I can get gas and beer at Costco. Sure you can. I buy my beer there sometimes, but after I get my gas, I got to go park my car, walk into Costco to the back of the store and pick up my warm beer. It's not cold. So if you got, if they want to sell warm beer, go for it. I don't think too many people are going to be popping up, popping up in the top of those guest, um, those beer cans if it's warm. And the other thing too, if the wine doesn't have a cork in it, then it should not be sold at the gas station. Because not too many people carry around a cork scrape. Don't make it, they can't have the cheap stuff. I mean, like again, ninety-nine cent store. You know, I've been to many council meetings. I have never heard a resident get up here and say, "We need alcohol in gas stations." The only time you hear that is when they're trying to change the law. And then all of a sudden I see them high-fiving the, the owners of the gas stations on the way out. It's just a little quink eating there. Quite often you hear them say, "It's only beer, it's only wine." That's alcohol. We were sent recently, um, email about a father who had five kids in his car. He'd been drinking beer at home and decided he needs some more beers and took the kids out to get some hamburgers. Well, he no longer has five kids, he only has two because he's, he was in a, um, a head-on crash because he was drunk, but he needed that beer. And he got the beer from a gas station, just so you know. Don't make it easier for people to drink and drive. It's the message you should be thinking about. And if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Fred Sykes, followed by Brian Tabatabai.
First of all, I hope you remember, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Think about that. I have walked my street for two days. My, my neighbors talked to them about this issue and I said, "I'm going to be speaking tonight. Can you sign this petition, please?" And this petition is asking that we don't change the law that we've had since I moved here. When I moved here in nineteen seventy-eight, that law was in place. And it's just a little sign, you know, it's a symbol. It's a part of, like Steve said, it's a part of the fabric of West Covina. It's what makes West Covina, West Covina, makes us different, makes us special. That's over a hundred and fifty signatures, which is in a couple of days. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Council members, staff, members of the audience. I'm Frederick Sykes, retired deputy sheriff. That's part of why I'm fighting so hard because I've seen a lot of this stuff, what alcohol does to people. And I'm also the former mayor of this city. I love this city. It's another reason I'm here. So I, uh, submitted that petition with those hundred and fifty names. And, uh, remember, this, this was gotten in the COVID style. Mask on and distancing to get those signatures. It's not easy. Abolishing this no alcohol sold in gas stations law is not making the city better. It's not improving our situation. The planning commissioners and the chief of police, they're not going to go against you. They know the desire of this majority. That's why they're quick, quick turnaround. Three of you said, "Hey, we want it." So you send it over there, they didn't do any type of due diligence. Couple of little conversations about it, boom, it's right back here without any research. We get, I just told you, I got these signatures with COVID. COVID has an impact. That should have been some kind of a lease, some kind of little report about that. What's happening with people, uh, with this COVID environment and alcohol? Not that difficult to do. And they're going to go, they're not going to go against you even though this law is like the over, uh, two dozen, uh, community service groups that we have in our community. This is this part of this hidden infrastructure that makes West Covina a better city. This is also a huge betrayal to the city that I and my neighbors and our liquor store owners have invested in. Some of these betrayed liquor store owners have been here for more than fifty years. Some have contributed to our youth and sports programs and in other ways to our community. And now tonight, the city leaders are making it more difficult for them to stay in business. Our city already has a large number of convenience stores, liquor stores and liquor vendors. And this adds to the burden of police work and public safety. When I use these convenience stores, this is what I see. A store by design that attracts crime and other social problems. The small operation of Quick End Grab and Go that has built-in crimes of opportunity, just built into the fabric of the store. Taking merchandise and running out of the store without paying. I used to write a lot of reports for that at convenience stores. Underage drinking. Customers oftentimes are confronted by people loitering around, begging, panhandling, stealing, purse snatching, among other harmful things that are happening all around these kind of locations, but nobody can see that. I see it and it's there if you look. There are the assaults and the robberies of the stores and the customers. And usually these places attract a lifestyle of homelessness and derelicts. By removing this law, we're lowering a longstanding standards that our city has that makes us special, especially when you look at... Especially when you look around and see how everybody around us, they have already, they don't have that law. We have this local control. And combined with the tremendous understaffing of West Covina PD, this is a bad idea.
Did you read about, did you read about, please?
At the worst time. Yeah, it's just horrible, you know? I only got five minutes, and I got a, I got a ton of things that I can talk about because I saw people die.
Okay.
Drinking and driving, underage drinking. Kids can drink too much. And I've written dead body reports about this kind of stuff.
Thank you so much.
So anyway, I hope that the majority of you see that you should vote against this. This is not a good idea, and this is bad timing for it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Fred, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Brian Tabatabai, followed by Minerva Avila.
Good evening, council. I'd like to begin my public comments by acknowledging the land and the native peoples to whom this land belongs as its original caretakers. This is the land of the Tongva Nations, and they are still here. We stand in solidarity with all indigenous people and their right to self-determination and justice. We commit to working toward the healing of the generational trauma, theft, and dispossession native peoples have faced and continue to face. "We commit," those words. "We commit." Those are words that every one of you who has been honored to serve us residents have uttered. Whether on the campaign trail or when you took that oath of office, there was a commitment made to us, the residents of West Covina. A commitment to listen, a commitment to serve, but most importantly, a commitment to do the work necessary to make the tough decisions. To do the reading, to ask the questions, to come prepared, to cast a vote, and convey clearly your reasoning to the residents of West Covina. It is clear that members of this council have not taken this commitment seriously. On October 16th, a member of this council admitted in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune to not doing their due diligence before voting on raises that have pushed the city closer to bankruptcy. Councilman Johnson admitted the 12% raises given the police and fire departments in 2019 were not a good idea. The raises that were given to the police and fire in hindsight, they should have never been given. We were told it was in the budget for it, and it wasn't, it really wasn't, though. It really wasn't, though. Luckily for the city of West Covina, residents banded together and defeated Tax WC, which Councilman Johnson wholeheartedly endorsed and would have attached another 13% on top of the 12% which should have never been given. And here we find ourselves again, another consequential vote that will fundamentally change our city. In August, Councilman Johnson told the Tribune that alcohol sales at our gas stations would generate money for West Covina. We definitely need the revenue, and I think this would bring a good source of revenue. Based on what research? Based on what studies? What did you read? A month later, during the District One Forum, the rationale changed. It was no longer revenue, it now is fairness, parity. It was no longer our budget shortfalls, it was creating fair competition. Again, based on what reading, what study? When talking about fairness, are we considering the advantages gas stations have based on certain locations? Do we consider the advantages of a gas station located near Queen of the Valley? Or a gas station located on Plaza West Covina? Or ones that contain a car wash? Or give Dodger tickets with an eight-gallon fill-up? Or give rewards with use of their credit card? Or treat cheaper prices with a store membership? When making this decision, are we taking into account how gas stations manipulate consumers into entering the convenience store? By offering a cheaper price for those who pay cash? Or charging 35 cents at the pump? Are we considering the different marketing strategies that are used that entice consumers to purchase alcohol when that was not their initial intent? Has this council considered the public safety cost? The cost of increased calls to convenience stores which sell alcohol? Has this council considered the cost of potential litigation from gas stations who will surely argue against the arbitrary nature of square footage requirement? Consider this council's rationale of fairness. Has this council considered the fact that the residents overwhelmingly do not want this change? What due diligence was done by this council? Or are some on the council waiting for reelection to do the assigned reading? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Minerva, followed by Francis. Minerva, go ahead.
Thank you. During the two hours I was on hold, a friend emailed me a comment, so I'm going to read hers first and then mine. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I am Eileen Miranda Jimenez, a 24-year homeowner and resident of West Covina. I am opposed to expanding alcohol sales at gas stations. We currently have ample locations to purchase alcohol, such as Bevmo, grocery stores, Target, Walmart, et cetera. There is no immediate need to expand locations. I grew up in a community that had alcohol easily accessible at many, many locations to residents. I left my childhood community to attend college in a dry town. I had never heard of a dry town and was in disbelief that alcohol was not sold in any store or location within the town or city limits. It was no coincidence that my college town had very, very low crime rate while my childhood town had a very high crime rate. Fellow high school classmates would brag about where they knew they could purchase or get access to alcohol. More than half the time, it was at gas stations, quick convenience stores, or independently-owned liquor stores. I am pleased that my West Covina hometown has a responsible and reasonable balance of alcohol accessibility. Not a dry town, but not easily available at every turn. There is no pressing or immediate need to expand sales to gas stations. All the locations that currently sell alcohol have not suddenly gone dry. I urge each of you council members to oppose the expansion of alcohol sales at gas stations in partnership, Eileen Miranda Jimenez. Now for mine. Good evening, I'm Minerva Avila, West Covina resident. I live in District Four. Why is it necessary for this city council, at the request of Councilman Johnson, to consider lifting the ban on the sale of alcohol at gas stations? Why must it be addressed now during a pandemic when residents are busy just trying to survive? Not only is the move to make this change shameful, the timing is reprehensible. I'm going to read the following few lines from a California State PTA resolution. Quote, "Limiting concurrent sales of gasoline and alcohol at the proliferation of outlets." Whereas "the proliferation of outlets which sell alcohol within communities is growing, especially in terms of the increasing numbers of gas station mini-marts." And "whereas adolescent alcohol abuse can lead to early addiction, increased incidence of crime and death rates, i.e. suicides, traffic fatalities, and accidental deaths. And therefore be it resolved that the California State PTA urge its units, councils, and districts to encourage support of regulations in their local communities, limiting the proliferation and availability of alcohol vendors." This resolution urges PTAs to encourage and support local regulations, ordinances to limit the proliferation of availability of these alcohol vendors. That's just part of the resolution. You can read it full at www.capta.org. My children go to school in District Two at Orangewood and Edgewood. Across the street from Edgewood, there is a gas station with a convenience store. Diagonally from that gas station is another gas station with a convenience store. Adjacent to that gas station is a 7-Eleven which already sells alcohol. At the end of school, students stop at the gas station outlets to purchase snacks and refreshments. An hour or two after school, athletes from Edgewood tend to go to the convenience stores across the street from Edgewood to purchase Gatorade and snacks. It's common to see students outside the gas station convenience stores as they snack and chat with their friends. If the city changes the ordinance, then there will be three outlets selling alcohol within walking distance from Edgewood. Two additional locations where there will likely be more crime, more opportunities for underage drinking, more danger to children in the community, more work for police officers. Why would any council member want this for the residents of this city? The change is not worth it. Not only is the move to make this change shameful, the timing is reprehensible. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Francis. Francis, go ahead.
Good evening, council, and all of my community members there present. I hope you, your families are safe and healthy and being well-cared-for in this time. I am asking, I am the resident of West Covina, I am in District One. Since March, my heart has been breaking regularly, thinking about all of those kiddos, all of those family members that are living in homes with abuse, that nobody is able to check on, care for. The mental health dynamic that we are surviving through right now is very real and spiking in ways that we cannot even begin to imagine, let alone see while we're all hidden in our homes. And I just think it's unnecessary, completely, utterly unnecessary, to increase the availability of alcohol when it already exists in the community. There is no strong benefit to adding alcohol sales to gas stations. In fact, what I think about and my own personal fear with my three kids under 10, when I go to fill up my gas or when I go to the supermarket, is how much of a sitting duck I am with my three kiddos in the back as I'm waiting at a pump, trying to watch and see from any which direction, because I'm very aware that the desperation, the hunger, the depression, and the mental health issues that we are going through are spiking, and I just don't feel safe. Adding alcohol to a gas station while I'm sitting there while people may be loitering or going there intentionally with the explicit purpose of buying beer and wine for consumption is a health and safety issue. I think it also, you know, brings to mind, we're talking, I have heard, I've been in West Covina for over 10 years, and I hear us claim that we're a very pro-business city. But I am confused with the idea that our liquor stores, which are small businesses, would have to compete then with gas stations, a business that has not had any, I don't know who has not stopped buying gas. Gas stations don't need help to increase their revenue, but what it might do is drive that small mom-and-pop liquor store out of business. So I just want us to be really clear with what our values are. It is, I heard in favor, the position that times are changing and we need to get up to code. The times are changing, that is, wait, this is 2020, it is not normal. And this is a community and a state and a country in their extreme stress and chaos. So I urge you, please, to oppose any changes. Let's take some pride in the fact that we are standing up for the health and safety of our community members by not having gas stations with wine in there. It's just a completely unnecessary and a move that serves, I'm not clear who, but I know that it definitely would not serve my heart or my gut while I'm pumping my gas or I'm at any other places in the city when I know it's not much more available. I sincerely thank you for your time, your consideration, and heart, and voting out of love. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please. We have any people still on the phone?
No more on the phone, Mayor. I was given a speaker card by J.D.
Good evening. Mayor Woo, you're getting old. You're getting old.
No, this job's stressful, okay?
Obviously, obviously. I'm going to tell you why, because...
One more, one more, I'm done, okay?
Ah, I don't think you'll last, but you could be optimistic. There was a time you, Spence, Toma, Warsaw, Worsaw. Even you, Lloyd, was standing close to be up here until midnight debating whether you should approve a fee or not. And since this last, since this council, I see you want to get out of here five minutes after arriving.
For the efficiency.
Efficiency, all right, I'll buy that. I want those folks that are in favor of this ordinance to know it's going to pass. It's going to pass. Because nothing's changed since it last failed. But it's back. That tells me this is a done deal. This is, we're just going through the motions here. I think everybody, and those that are not here tonight, are not here because they know that you've already decided to pass this ordinance. So it's kind of sad that when speakers on the phone or those that come to this podium are speaking, Dario or some others will turn their heads and pretend like they're bored with what's being said. At least give them the decency of your attention. We do have a homeless problem. And a third of that homeless problem is due to drugs and alcohol. And I would say that the alcohol came before the drugs. And there was a time, Dario on the Planning Commission and you on this council, and I believe you as well, Councilman Lloyd, that you were going to approve marijuana. You wanted to bring dispensaries to West Covina. I find that far more consistent than what you're doing here tonight. I'm not sure why you're discriminating against alcohol. And I mean spirits. You don't get drunk off beers? I sure the hell have. So why the inconsistency? You want parity? Give them spirits. Approve spirits. Approve the marijuana. Why don't you do that? Because there's a point of saturation that common sense tells you, you need to respect. This is not just about dollars and cents, because this is very similar with that, to that emergency declaration. It's about dollars and cents. It's not going to be one. It's going to be as many as apply and as many as the Planning Commission is told to approve, just like this ordinance. Watching that time. So people get a little discouraged when they invest their time to come down here and hope to have a city council that will consider their petition impartially, in an impartial way, as opposed to have already decided that they're going to vote one way or the other. And in this case, it comes through so loud and clear because, like I said, this ordinance change has come through this council and previous councils, and it's been denied. Nothing has changed. You're not considering that there has to be a point that you draw back and say, you know what? We're going to impact the quality of life. Just like marijuana, just like spirit, just like alcohol, there comes a point where you have to say, okay, yes, we live in a capitalist country, I'm a free marketer. I love the dollar, but I love my beers, too. But I don't have an inconvenience to go into any store in West Covina today and pick it up beers. I don't need a drive-through to do that or a gas station. That's kind of silly stuff. I'm going to stop... I'm gonna stop there. No, actually, I'm gonna say one last thing to you, Lloyd. Lloyd, I think, and I'm not gonna charge you for this advice, but I think you would've done yourself a lot of good had you recused yourself on this vote. If not for legal reasons or the integrity of this council, that would've helped you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, J D, but I, I want to make a correction. It's not a dispensary, it's a marijuana cultivation. Okay? Cultivation, okay? No, 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 it never, it never happened. It, it's a cultivation.
It was eventually, initially, and then it went to cultivation and, no, the cultivation was...
Well, anyway, but thank you so much, we're gonna move on, okay? And I don't think we passed that, okay? So we are going to, okay, next speaker, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I have a presentation, so he could look at, uh, the presentation. So the first question I have on the presentations, I was hoping the city attorney could answer them. The first one is related to the campaign donation to Councilman Johnson. So I just was, uh, wondering if receiving the campaign donation from a gas station owner, um, who stands to gain financially from the removal of the law, if that's a conflict of interest? So I would like to have that question answered. Also, the 2,000 square foot requirement for convenience stores to sell alcohol, I wanted to get the city attorney's opinion on that because it seems discriminatory. So I know that the narrative that's gonna be talked about tonight will be, it's only four gas stations. It's not all the gas stations, but all it takes is one, um, gas station owner to file lawsuit because of some sort of discrimination because every time I've asked about that 2,000 square foot requirement, there's not really any sort of justification or it's not quantifiable, they're just saying 2,000. So to me, obviously, I would wanna limit it to four, but, uh, the narrative again is gonna be, oh, it's only four, but within a day we get sued, it could be 21 that could apply for the CUP. So that's another question I would like answered. Uh, the next slide is, I would like some questions answered by the police chief. Um, it would be interesting to know what, uh, impacts there would be on, in enforcing all the new conditions on all the new outlets. Also, uh, the impacts on responding to increased calls for service for these locations? And the most important question is, I think we, we really have, uh, a lack of, um, I guess, recommendations from our police department. So I would really like the police chief to either recommend removal of the law or recommend approval of removing the law and why or why not. I think that would, uh, put the residents at ease. And I, I said this at the planning commission, I said, if the police chief comes up here and says that he supports removing the law, then really, there's nothing else we can say because he's the, our ultimate authority, he has the ju- you know, he can justify it. So that's a question I would want asked of the police chief. So quickly run through the rest of my slides. The next slide is just about public health. I've said this many times, increasing the density of alcohol outlets will, uh, deteriorate public health. Next slide. This is an important one. Um, the Department of Justice actually has a document related to underage drinking and they specifically, uh, recommend restricting alcohol sales at gas stations. And if you can see there, it says number two, restrict prohibit concurrent sales of alcohol in gasoline stations. And they even say that jurisdictions would benefit if they had imposed the law in 1980, which we have. Uh, it says, if, for example, a local jurisdiction had enacted in 1980, a land use restriction that prohibited alcohol and gasoline sales at, at the same retail outlet, then this marketing scheme would not have taken hold in a locality. So this is coming from the Department of Justice, not from me, not from any anecdotal evidence, this is an actual verifiable document. So by removing the law, we're actually contradicting the recommendation from the Department of Justice. Next slide, I looked at the calls for service for the West Covina Police Department. Uh, this is a data-driven recommendation. This is not, again, an anecdotal, this is not something I just came up with. When you look at convenience stores that sell alcohol and you look at gas station convenience stores, the incidents and calls for service at the alcohol sales is nearly double gas station convenience stores. They also have higher rates of crime and they also have higher alcohol-related incidents. And I urge you to not take my word for it, you know, you could ask the police department and you could pour through those numbers yourself and verify that. But this is a data-driven solution or a recommendation that it's obvious that when these locations start selling, there's gonna be more incidents and that comes with increased public safety costs. And it's not scare tactics, it's data. The last, the next slide, I, I did a poll on Nextdoor, two-thirds of residents opposed it. Um, there was some comments regarding the people that did support it and most of them were related to tax revenue. And when we, when they were confronted with the fact that there might not be any tax revenue, they were kind of at a, at a, at a dead end, but, um, a ma- a majority of the residents still opposed it, two-thirds. And I specifically asked, should West Covina allow more convenience stores to sell alcohol? Because in the past, they've said, if I could have 20 more seconds.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I, I asked that question because, uh, in the past, people have said convenience stores and gasoline stations are the same thing. The only difference is that they sell alcohol. And then in the next slide, I asked on Nextdoor, uh, residents take our neighborhoods back? And it was 83% of residents there opposed it. So here you have a clear, um, I guess, vote. So lastly, I would just say that maybe we should hold off to the election because there's a clear indication that the residents don't want this.
Thank you, Robert, thank you so much. And, uh, that's it, right? Uh, is it? Any resident in person want to address council about this issue, uh, in favor and opposition? Anyway, the one hasn't spoken, okay? Otherwise, I'm going to close the oral communication. Okay, uh, gonna, we're gonna close the oral communication, we're gonna move back to council question and discussion. And I wanna start, okay? Yeah, Mayor Portin, go ahead.
So I, I know residents hit, um, Councilman Johnson for receiving a campaign donation from the gas station. I too have received the same donation. Um, obviously, my vote is different from Councilman Johnson, but I did wanted to verify with the city attorney, um, to make it clear, is this a conflict of interest and...
Mr. Mayor, this is not a conflict of interest and you're allowed to participate in the hearing tonight, both of you.
Okay, that's it, okay? Any other question?
Um, the other one is, um, in regards to Mr. Torres. Um, if it does pass, can the other gas stations challenge or file a suit for discrimination and not allowing others to sell?
Well, council's gonna need to articulate some basis for the 2,000 square foot requirement to withstand any challenge to the ordinance.
And the other question is for our chief. Unless you're later, okay?
Okay, uh, I have a piggyback about Mayor Portin question regarding, and, uh, uh, Mr. Robert Torres regarding the, uh, 2,000 square feet, okay? And, uh, I, I really have a, um, first question I have, maybe Joanne can answer. How many gas station with convenience store that we have in West Covina city boundary? Twenty-one, twenty-two?
Twenty, twenty, I believe 21. All gas, all gas stations in West Covina have some type of convenience stores.
So 21 gas station with convenience store, okay? How many is the 2,000 square feet and up? And how many is 1,500 and up? And how many 1,000 and up? Or how many is below 1,000? Convenience store meaning, when you say convenience store, meaning you selling any other beverage, okay, or snack for people to pick it up when they pump the gas? Do you have any number for that?
We do not have that information. We obtained information on the gasoline, on how many convenience stores or gasoline stations have convenience stores from the business license data. And the business di- license data is not required to provide the size of...
I know, but, but it, this is important for, I think, council to make a decision regarding, okay? Because we, if we restrict the 2,000 square feet, and then we have to know who is 1,850 or 1,900 or, okay, 1,700, so meaning they are so close, but they not quite, so meaning they out of the, the loop. So we need to understand how many convenience store, otherwise it's not fair to them. And how many is 1,500, they, they shot 500? And how many below 1,000, so meaning they have a very small convenience store? And I don't know, can we call them a convenience store or they just something, a room for you to pick up something very quickly, just a soda or a drink? So I think we need to have a survey about what a gas station, the definition of a convenience store, why they just, okay, limit to 2,000 square feet? Because how the fairness, okay, we talk about fairness to all the gas station. And, uh, and it's, do you have a number for that?
As far as how many convenience...
I know, I said it again, the square footage with convenience store, okay? How many is, okay, 1,900, 1,500, something be, who is between 15, let's make it easier, 2,000 and up, how many we have?
I believe that as far as the 2,000 square feet, less than five conven- um, gasoline stations.
So it's four, less than five, maybe four.
Approximately.
We, we, Joanne, we need to have a exact number, so we need a, okay, roughly four. So how many between 1,500 to 2,000? We don't have that number.
We, we don't have that information.
Okay, and, uh, how many is that 1,000 under, okay? Okay, and then we need to know the definition of a convenience store that go with the gas station. So we need to prepare all these numbers, so I think council can make a decision. Because you just put a 2,000, I think it's discriminatory, okay, regarding the square footage, okay? I think it should be put on the location. Okay, location of a gas station to sell beer and wine, that maybe make more sense, okay? They are away from the school, away from the, and they on the busy street, okay? Not by square footage. It should be by location and it's, it could still have to go to the planning department to go to the condition use permit and, uh, goes through the hearing, so we have, uh, another layer of make sure the resident is okay with their location. So anyway, we, we, and we need that information and this, the second information is regarding the, the police report. You okay to have police talk about this? To talk about, I think the people worry, I think it's, this is a little bit, okay, very controversial issue because some people really scared about, would this create more crime? Okay, and, uh, during this pandemic time, so maybe police can give us a report. I, I don't think you have, you don't need to say you for, this is not your business, it's our city council business, but you need to tell us about the data. What's the number?
Mayor Wu, um, I'm sorry, because this is a public hearing, I can't just sneak out for a comfort break, so I'm sorry to interrupt, but can we take a, like, five-minute break?
Can you do this? Can you go to the, you wanna go bathroom?
I can't because we're in the middle of a public hearing. So we, we would have to take a break for me to be able to...
Uh, can you hold on, can, let the police finish? Okay, can you, can you wait? Wait for, let the police to, since you, we come down? Okay, uh, are you okay? Thank you so much, appreciate it, okay? Let's go ahead, police, since you come down, I, I don't want to suspend, okay?
I got it, okay, Mayor, thank you, uh, for the opportunity and, uh, thank you, council. So I'm just gonna give you some statistical data. First of all, um, any additional alcohol places that you put in place will increase calls for service, it's, it's a natural fact. Those call for service sometimes can consume a minimum of two officers, sometimes three, it can last for over an hour. That will impact service to the city. But as I was going through the numbers presented with some of the P R A request, um, I found that, uh, some of the data is, um, uh, not quite understood. So there was one report that said there was, uh, um, I think I have it here, I just don't, I don't wanna misquote, um, 15,000 calls for service, um, um, over these convenience stores. And as I started to go through and highlight the ones that was related to alcohol, those numbers were far less than what's stated in here. Are the calls gonna increase? Yes. Are all the calls, uh, called in from the convenience store, are they all alcohol-related? The answer to that is no. And I'll just give you an example. A police officer can make a traffic stop in front of the liquor store that has nothing to do with the liquor store, but give the address of the liquor store and that's counted by the liquor store. That's just the way it is, right? Um, uh, an elderly person could have a episode, trouble breathing, in front of the liquor store, at the liquor store, rescue shows up, give that address, that's counted as a call for service. So as I started to highlight that, um, I found that, uh, those numbers were greatly diminished. However, uh, when it comes to alcohol-related calls, the police department will be impacted. And we've been reduced down to 90 officers this year. Um, so we don't have as many officers available, so yes, uh, that is a concern of mine. There was one other point I wanted to make, uh, with respect to DUI driving. Um, I wanted to see if I could draw a correlation between alcohol purchased in West Covina and our DUI driving, and I could not find any correlation to that. That's not to say that someone we arrested did not purchase alcohol in the city of West Covina, but they could've been driven from any city and got stopped driving through West Covina and we make an alcohol-related arrest. So I did a, uh, study over the last five years on alcohol DUI arrest information, and I found that in five years, there were 707 DUI arrests. Uh, but we average 80,000 incidents a year. So when you add that up over five years, you got 40,000 calls for service and incidents. So comparatively, it's a small number. Um, the numbers are down from 2014 to 2019 by 37%. So I couldn't find that correlation, so I can't say that by adding these, um, convenience stores is gonna be more, there's always that potential though. Um, so that's all the data I have, uh, without adding my own personal, um...
I, I, I have a question, okay? Since you don't have the data, since we don't have a gas station with convenience store selling the beer and wine, so you, you don't have enough data, but did you have, uh, comparison data? For example, Covina, okay, or, uh, El Monte, okay? El Monte, I think maybe is a good example because they have similar population size, okay? So we have a gas station, they're selling alcohol, what number they have, okay, with the call? So we can get the data, so we know, we can compare in that way, is there really increase if the gas station selling alcohol and the, and the DUI and, and underage use the fake ID, okay? And, and that, I think this data is very important, uh, for the council to make a decision, including myself, because we, the safety, I think, is everybody concerned. Okay, so we need to have the data comparison, okay? Do we have a data?
I don't have that data, but I can tell you that each city is different. Um, you're comparing us to El Monte or Glendore, the demographics different, the education level is different, the amount of money people make are different. It, it's just a different comparison. We can, we, we can draw those numbers and say, well, you know, this, this convenience store sells alcohol versus that one, but...
Okay.
The numbers have to be identical in order for there to be a comparison.
Of course, and the city, West Covina, 17 square mile, the south side, north side, east, west side, they're all different, okay? But, but the thing is, the human being, the human behavior is the same, okay? So we want to compare, uh, the, the alcohol, the selling, okay, beer and wine of gas station. I think we should have the data on the El Monte Police Department, seeing that number, okay, compared with the, with some of the places, okay? We, I think we can take, basically, we have some number to base on, that, that is what. So you, because right now, if they approve, okay, if we approve, then basically the flag is open. And, uh, when it's open, it's very difficult to close it.
I agree.
So we want to have a very carefully, okay, don't rush it, okay, to get all the data. So from there, we can see the genuine, it's really not much different than the worry is too much, it's just, uh, a grandfather, they, they want, or the, with the data really showing the increase and we don't have a police officer enough due to, a lot of people want to retire, a lot of people, okay, during pandemic, sick, this and that, we don't have enough officer. So we need to make sure during this time, we can protect our resident. I think you understand my point of view.
I do.
With the data, if we carefully to, to get all the number, I think that's our job.
I, I understand, I, I can check with different cities, it's gonna take a little bit to get their numbers because they have to pull them, I can't, um, I, I do think...
Can we get it? Can we get a number?
I'm, I'm gonna try, uh, I think it's...
I think this is probably record, I think this is probably record regarding, okay, the police station, how many call they have, not police station, I'm sorry, gas station, okay, and the selling alcohol in El Monte, or maybe Covina, our neighbor city, of what, how many call they have compared with our gas station, how many, because we are neighbors, so how many, or Bowen Park, okay? We, we close to each other, why is the call? I think right away, we can see the number, okay, to do a judgment.
I'm sure I can get the number of how many gas stations sell alcohol and what their call for service is, I can have that number for you.
Yes, so I think we said number, if the number is really the same, then we gotta prove, okay? We let prove, and at the same time, with, uh, how many square footage, okay, all that kind of issue, then we don't have a potential lawsuit because otherwise you have a kind of a favor just for a small group, that more than 2,000. I, I think this is a potential issue, okay, if we only restricted based on square footage. I think based on location would be much... I think based on location would be much safer, rather than based on square footage. Okay, so, so I, I think that this data is very important compared with neighboring city with a gas station selling beer and wine, and if we can see what the call number compared with ours, so what will be the difference?
Sure, I'll try to line it up so that it's a fair kind of comparison, but I'll get that data for you, sure.
Yeah, would you please, so, so I think with, with that, okay, and, and the, Mayor Putin, you have a question, remember you want the chief to answer? And you guys have any question, do you have any question? No, we wait, it's okay. We're not doing the voting, he, he went the time, okay, go ahead.
I know this, this issue is more of an alcohol issue more than anything, not just a gas station, because it does concern me that we have all these businesses that arise up, and they're selling alcohol, we have a new seven eleven, it sells alcohol, it could be near the schools and so forth, it sells alcohol. That does concern me that ninety-nine cent store sells cheap alcohol, and for one container, and I don't like that at all. I'm surprised that nobody challenged the county for allowing alcohol to be taken home technically on an open container, and, you know, nobody had an issue with that, but that, that concerns me, that, that is a big issue, generic in, in general. I wanted to know that, you know, especially during this whole COVID, with the recent businesses that are selling alcohol, and with the whole COVID that allows the alcohol to be taken home, have you seen, seen an increase in calls for alcohol-related in general items in our city?
Not, not according to the arrest data. I looked at the calls for service back through March, which is when this started, and there's been far less than previous years. But again, the contacts are down, there was a period of time where people weren't out, the streets were clear, so I don't know how fair that data is, you know, to use as a comparison, but there has not been an alarming increase of any alcohol-related arrest, or anything like that, that I can see. I'd have to dig into the numbers a little more to give you an accurate account of that, but I, I don't see it just glancing at the numbers right now.
Okay, and then I have a piggyback question, on the, okay, on the convenience store, the selling beer and wine or alcohol, do we have, okay, the homeless, or the transient, or any of potential people drunk in public around the neighborhood?
At all of these convenience stores, I found calls where they were drunk in public, we call it six forty-seven F, so there's people there that have obviously consumed alcohol, and is going back for more, you're not gonna stop that, if you're selling alcohol, and the place is convenient, people are gonna, are gonna show up there. Now, the correlation to homelessness, not all homelessness drink, but, but are there homeless around places that sell alcohol? The answer to that is yes.
So, so, so meaning, okay, but the, the liquor store, they're selling hard liquor, right? But how about beer and wine, okay, so will that be a difference, or let the same?
Well, if you are an alcohol drinker, I, I think you're gonna go wherever you can get your hands on alcohol, if it means that much to you. And I'm talking about those people who have a problem, not those people who drink responsibly, so I, I, I can't answer that accurately for you.
But, but, but the, the point is, based on your, okay, as a police chief, or the, or the record currently you have is convenience store, okay, they're selling alcohol, right now, we have more call for the people drunk in public around the neighborhood?
Well, the mere fact that you're selling alcohol creates that, and if you're not selling alcohol, then you can't be, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that a person that drinks can't go to a convenience store, but because you're selling alcohol, there's more likelihood that you're gonna contact someone who's drinking.
How about for the fairness, okay, we not only attack, okay, the convenience store or potentially, okay, a gas station selling beer and wine? I'm talking about how about restaurant, restaurant, they selling beer and wine like all the places, restaurant come up, they selling beer and wine, will that create, can, can we compare that? Okay, to that, is that apple to apple, or is it apple to orange?
I, I, I think a restaurant is a little different.
It's different.
Usually therefore, short period of time, you're eating, you're conversating, I mean, can you get drunk at a restaurant? The answer is yes. But comparing that to a convenience store, I think is, is.
So it's totally different, so we cannot compare, because somebody argue and say, hey, if, if, why, if, okay, restaurant selling alcohol, why a beer and wine, why not, okay, have a convenience, okay, the, the gas station, so that's why I want to understand, compare with, with, do they have?
One, one of the differences, restaurants usually shut down at nine, ten, eleven, not nine, but now it's nine, but ten or eleven, where convenience stores will stay open till as late as two in the morning.
We only can sell alcohol till two o'clock.
Two o'clock, that's right, so you will see incidents such as the fights and those sort of things happening in the late hour of the night because of the alcohol, you usually don't find that at the restaurant, because it, because it closes down, so I don't think that's a fair comparison.
And, okay, besides, you can get the data regarding the, okay, gas station selling beer and wine, okay, and the other city Covina, and our neighboring city to see the number, okay, can you, okay, get some of the inform, in, in, information, okay, regarding, okay, and how, how, how those gas station, okay, from the El Monte, okay, Covina, okay, and then they, they pick up a three container? I think three container is like very single, so why not six pack, okay, I don't know why, okay, the sales beer in quantity fewer, okay, not allow for, okay, three container, so will that be a issue based on the police, your, okay, record, okay, because you go to the, you, you, you buy six pack, you get a, okay, okay, or case, okay, and they puts, put in your, okay, luggage, okay, and we know that you cannot have an open container when you are driving, so with this, will that be a issue? They say three container, okay, fewer than three container is prohibited, three container is three, one, two, three, so.
I, I've seen stores where they sell packages of three, that's a A B C issue that I'd have to check and see if it's legal.
Can we?
I, I don't know that it's not.
We waste up to six containers, so in that way, to be, people just get a six pack, and then, so in that, that's three, basically, almost like a single one, you can just drive.
You're the council, you can make whatever you want, I mean, that's.
I'm just questioning, as a police officer.
I, I think it's a little bit more, a little easier if you just buy one to consume it right there, that's just my opinion, opposed to a six pack, but I mean, there, there are laws in place that you're not supposed to drive and drink, you're not supposed to open the container in your car, I mean, that still exists, is it easier? Yes, to answer your question.
Three, three container?
Yeah.
Okay, you have a question, go ahead.
No, and, and to follow up with Mayor Wu, I, I deal, I work in L A, obviously, and I deal with our senior lead officers, we deal with the, you know, people who drink and stuff, I, my senior lead officer says that when, generally speaking, if it's three or under, easy, but when, when they have to purchase bulk, they find it statistically that they don't drink as much, because they like to just go buy, that's why I'm like for not just one alcohol.
Yeah, if you're a drinker and you're buying one, you're, you're going there to drink it.
They usually have their friends or something.
So that's why I don't understand why our planning approve, okay, three container, okay, I think there should be six pack or a case, okay, so in that way, can reduce, I, I'm speaking to you, you cannot reduce, but this, okay, you, you have to buy a quantity, so in that way, people just don't get a chip, okay, and the dry, so it's, again, the council, and the payphone, this is ridiculous, I don't know what payphone right now, we have payphone, but it's nothing to do with you, I just don't know why to put, I don't even can see the payphone, payphone like an ancient machine, like you want to take a picture, oh, the payphone right there, okay, so, I probably use a cell phone right now, any other question you have, and any council you have a question? Okay?
Okay, this is for you, I have a bunch of other questions that will not be directed towards you. If I remember correctly, last year, when this came before the council and was in front of the planning commission, most, if not all, of the questions asked by Mayor Wu were answered for the planning commission before it was brought forward to the city council. Have you seen a substantive change in that information since a year ago?
I haven't, the information is relatively the same. I remember when this argument came up last time, and it's the same arguments, so, you know, it's just a decision council's gonna have to make.
Have you seen a bigger increase, because restaurants were brought up, and, you know, the traditional sense is people sit there and drink their drinks, and maybe they don't have as long of a period of time, but with COVID, restaurants are now allowed to put in-to-go cups alcohol, so are you seeing more DUIs from those sales?
I addressed that, and I have not as of now, but again, we have obviously less officers on the street, and we are not as active as we were because of COVID, so could there be? The answer is yes, but I have not seen the numbers.
So you don't have the data, that's what you're saying?
And, and I don't have a way to get that data.
On that particular issue, and then just out of curiosity, are we having a lot of people outside of grocery stores, Target, any other stores in the city that sell alcohol that are allowed to sell single cans? Do we have people standing in the parking lots and cracking one open in comparison?
Yeah, I don't have that data, I don't know of all the stores that sell singles versus, versus six packs.
Anecdotal, because we were talking about, you know, the fact that we have in here that gas stations that may be approved by, get a C U P, cannot sell in packages lower than three. Currently, grocery stores, Target, Bevmo, liquor stores can sell in packages of one, you can buy a single beer. And so if it is more likely that they're going to crack one open, why are we not looking at them to say, put the same three-can limit? Because, I mean, it just makes sense to me that if you're see, it would more likely see an issue if you are able to buy one, that you would be seeing that at those types of establishments.
I don't, I don't have the answer to that, if, if an individual wants to buy a single beer, and he knows where that location is, that's where he's gonna go get it.
Exactly, so it's not an issue of, if the convenience stores sell three, they're going to all of a sudden crack one open there, if they want a single beer, they'll go a place they have a single beer, if anything, it might be a deterrent if you want a single beer versus having to buy a three or six pack at usually a higher cost. Okay, so those are my only questions for you, I do have others that.
And then how soon you can get those data from the gas station selling beer and wine in our neighboring city, all those number can provide for council?
We'll start working on that tomorrow.
Okay, how soon we can get?
Reaching out, so I can't give you a definite timeline.
And Joanne, how soon we can get those number regarding eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred square feet, because right now, they want us to approve two thousand square feet, I worry about this is the so-called fairness issue and potential lawsuit. And how soon we can get those number provided for council?
We would have to physically go out there, I believe that.
I think you should phone call, make a phone call.
As soon as.
No, you just, you don't have to go out there, I think we have all the business, I think Polina is all the number, just call them up, and say how many square feet convenience store, how big is your square footage, they all know, because they have to, okay, based on this square footage, pay the, the, the business tax. So anyway, this is my, I think you don't.
As soon as next.
It's only twenty-one, okay, based on you say twenty-one has a convenience store, you call twenty-one number, you tell them, hey, how big is you, if they don't know, they don't know, then we send people to measure, so at least we can have a survey, and at some times, as then, do they want to apply beer and wine? Okay, so in that way, okay, and this, this thing should go to planning to set up the protocol regarding all this requirement, so for that, I want to make a motion to table this for continue, okay, to get all this information, okay, so in that way, it's not necessary to rush this thing, this thing is not like we have to do it due to the budget issue, I think with this thing, we should get all the data.
Can I finish asking my questions before we move forward with the motion then?
Yeah, go ahead.
I go?
You, you can go, okay, thank you. You have a question for the mayor?
No, that's who I, I mentioned before, those are my questions for him. Okay, we do have Planning Commissioner Herb Redholtz here, and from what I recall from last year, it was four convenience stations, uh, uh, gas stations that had a convenience store of two thousand square feet or more that would meet it. I believe we also had the numbers that I don't recall off the top of my head right now for the rest of the stations, and I don't know, Commissioner Redholtz, do you know off the top of your head? Okay, because again, we're talking about information that was given a year ago, so I can't imagine it's changed much. Okay, for the city attorney, I know you don't handle the planning commission, and you may not be able to answer this question, but it has been brought up that, you know, why the two thousand square feet? What are some of the conditions or requirements to establish reasoning behind the decision for two thousand square feet?
You're gonna have to articulate some basis for, as it relates to public health and safety, somehow, why you're choosing two thousand feet, you can eliminate that requirement if the council so desires. The, the requirement right after that provides a ten percent of that floor area ratio, so you're looking at something smaller than two thousand square feet, if it's, if it's fifteen hundred, you're gonna look at a hundred and fifty square feet of where they're gonna put some retail beer, so you're gonna have to articulate some basis as it relates to the public health, safety, and welfare, of why you would limit it to the two thousand square feet.
Are you aware of any reasoning from the planning commission as to why they chose the two thousand square feet that would meet those standards?
I'm not, Joanne, we just had a quick discussion, Joanne said there were a few comments about that, maybe she can help out with that, I'm not aware of any.
One of the comments regarding the two thousand square feet, they, they, as, since they limited it to ten percent of the, the total floor area of, of the convenience store, a small, they felt that a smaller, a, a smaller convenience store wouldn't be able to accommodate the, the sales of beer and wine, because it would require a, a, a lot smaller area.
Mr. Dorday, do you feel that that meets the standard? Because quite frankly.
Yeah, that would leave the, the city susceptible to a challenge without ordinance, but like I said, you can remove that condition. You have that second condition with ten percent.
Where they have a maximum of ten percent of the retail floor area shall be allowed for the display and sale of alcohol, are we allowed to change that percentage?
Sure, you need, you need to articulate a basis for that again as well, why, why you would change that, why, why would you want a higher or lower percentage?
Okay, and then, let's see. It's interesting listening to some of the comments, because we hear that allowing beer and wine at gas stations would saturate our city that's already saturated with liquor, but, oh no, you may put a liquor store out of business. It just doesn't compute in my mind, because it would seem to be contradictory, I never want to put a small business out of business, but how on one hand can you say beer and wine will saturate an already oversaturated city, yet it would also cause liquor stores who sell harder liquor to go out of business, so I thought that was interesting, there was a comment regarding the two thousand square feet requirement, and that who's to stop another council from getting rid of that? There's nothing to stop another council going forward, just like there's nothing that stops this current council from removing the two thousand square foot requirement, or removing the ordinance that prohibits beer and wine at a gas station. I do not want to delay this, but unfortunately, I do agree that it needs to be tabled, because for different reasons than Mayor Wu, but for me, we need to know if we have the reasoning in place to withstand a challenge to this ordinance.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Rocko, please to table this for further discussion, and we need to have all the information regarding what we just request, and regarding all the square footage, and regarding the challenge, what led to bring back to, to us for, okay, future meeting, so Rocko, please.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, is this, are you gonna, are you gonna continue this to the date, certain the second meeting in November, November seventeenth, or are you going, you want us to renotice it?
I think we should, we noticed about this issue, because we want have all the information, we, again, okay, it, it's not about, okay, and what, okay, we sell, okay, and wine, I think we need to get is all the data, all the information, right now, we don't have enough of police, and do we have increased the call if we doing this, so I don't. So I don't think we should rush this thing during this time. I think we should take the time, get all the information, get all the data and stuff on there. And if everything look okay, then fine, okay? But if they have increased the issue, then we should do it. We don't have to rush it. I think this is the, the point, okay? Why, why so rushed, okay? Why we need to do this right away? Do we have a life and death? Do we have a budget? It's not a budget issue. This is something, okay? And if everything number is okay, then we, we, we should be okay. So anyway.
Okay.
Rocko, please.
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a competing suggestion, and that is to approve this for first reading and have it brought back to us at the next meeting with the, I would like with the rationale to support that we can do the two thousand.
My motion is table this for future, for get all the data. It's nothing to do with approve this issue. If you want to approve this issue, you should amend as my motion to change to approval, because right now, my motion has nothing to do approval. My motion is.
I understand that.
For the future discussion.
And that's why I am mentioning that I would propose that we not table. I'm having discussion on the motion.
So basically, you're not going to second, okay, to table this? So you, you second the table?
It's already been seconded, which is why it's open for discussion now.
Well, I mean, she did mention, you know, changing like the percentage and stuff. So even if we do the first reading, there's gonna be things that's gonna be changed on this. So there's no point of approving this. I mean, it should be all tabled altogether. I'd like to see stats, I'd like to see, you know.
I'm not gonna approve this, here we get all the data.
Want data and statistics.
No data, no approval, okay? Because why we want to rush this thing without the data? Without we see all the neighboring city, regarding gas station, all those crime, okay? And what they increase or not? If not, then this then the challenge, then we can approve, okay? And with what you want. But without the data, without the, okay, potential lawsuit, the challenge, why we want to rush this thing? I think we should just table this for future discussion, for get all the data and go to planning, and then send back to us with all the number, with all the data. I, I think this is what, the way to protect the resident, okay? Because the data is the proof of what this is safe for open up this. If you feel so safe, then let's get the data, okay?
And I reiterate the fact that we have been given this data. It was given to us a year ago when it came forward to us. And so I have no problem.
Excuse me, councilman, okay, councilmember Shoemaker? I request the police chief regarding all the neighboring city with gas stations selling beer and wine. He say he doesn't have, but he can get it tomorrow right away. It's not about a year ago, they never request, because nobody asked about that.
Yes, they did. I actually watched the Planning Commission meetings and got the information and paid attention to the information, so.
Anyway, I don't think we need to continue to discuss this. I have this, or you want to amend my motion? So you want to amend the motion to, to vote on it? What you want, okay? Because my motion is table this for fut, future discussion. Anyway, I got a second from Mayor Proton, okay? And you want to make a, amend the motion?
I can amend it, or I can let you take a vote. And based on that, I will make a motion to actually accept this for first reading and have it come back for second reading with.
It, it's up to you, it's up to you. It's your right to decide what you want to do. You can amend the motion to have a vote, or you can have a vote exactly what you, what we have.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Shoemaker can make a substitute motion on top of the motion that's on.
That's what I'm saying, the substitute, I'm sorry. That's why I'm saying the, not amend the motion, substitute motion on top of my motion, okay? And the substitute motion have to get vote first. Am I right? Hey, done this five years already, man, this job's killing me, okay?
Then I'll go ahead and make the substitute motion that we receive this for first reading and not wait for the reading, bring it back for second with the requested information.
Okay, and so, so, so first, so the substitute motion? So what we should do next? I'm against that.
Mr. Mayor, you need a second to that motion.
So do I have a second for, okay, councilmember Shoemaker regarding my substitute motion?
Okay, I'll second that motion to accept the first reading on it and bring it back.
So meaning accept the motion to approve this, right?
Yes, to approve it.
Okay, so we have a first substitute motion moved by councilman, councilmember Shoemaker, and the second by Councilman Johnson. Rocko, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Let me give some rationale. No, I don't, I don't want to do it that way, where we do a first reading, because I, I've always been in favor of allowing it, but I don't like these conditions, especially the two thousand square foot requirement, as I mentioned before. I think Mayor Wu does make a good point about getting a little bit more data from the police chief. Worried about putting the city in liability by requiring two thousand square feet, so I'm not in favor of doing the first motion, although I am generally in favor of this, as I've always been. I think this is messy, and we do need to bring it back. So the substitute motion, I'm a no on, and we'll go from there.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
No.
Mayor Wu?
No, okay, the motion fails three-two, and then I go back to table this for future discussion, okay? And I made the motion, okay, second by Mayor Proton, okay, Lopez Viado. Rocko, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson? Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and the motion approved table this for go, get all the data and showing to planning and showing to the city council for one. Okay, thank you so much for coming, okay? Please drive safe home, okay? Bye, good night, okay?
Drink and drive.
We are going to, we are going to take a reset, okay? You want a reset? You, you go, do you want a reset, or you want to continue? Five minutes reset, okay? Then we go and, okay, to continue finish our meeting. So who's gonna put number six? You, right? Okay. Okay, now, okay, and the city council back in session, okay? In order, please, okay? And we're going to consent calendar, we already approved, and now we're going to number six. And Mayor Proton Lopez Viado, go ahead.
Thank you, and I, and I do want to thank Gabriel, I wanted to address this. I, I also want to give an intake on myself, because sometimes people hit me like, oh, you know, you've gone from nothing to something. And of course, that's a process. As people know, I work in Los Angeles, East LA Boyle Heights area, so I deal with a lot of issues. I do have family who reside in LA still, you know, in Inglewood or in different parts of LA. And actually, when I ran, most residents who didn't know me hit me negatively and said, oh, great, she's gonna bring LA here, and she's gonna turn West Covina to LA. There's a reason why I moved to West Covina. But of course, I'd like to bring all the good things, because there's great things in every city that I like to bring here in West Covina. But that being said, it's been clear by most residents that they've been saying we want local control. Every community is different, even within a city. And it doesn't mean that things we implement doesn't fall in line with the state. Sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't. But at least the residents have control. And we had that big debate regarding ADU, that they didn't like the state. Most of our residents were very loud and clear here, we had a long debate. So it, you know, most of the residents were upset when we didn't, you know, fall. And of course, the state overturned it, we had to go do the ADU. Our city offers a lot of programs and resources for our residents, the CDPG program, which I know family members who have utilized it to, for home improvements. But I just wanted to bring this up. I know Councilman Castellano has a take on this, because it is planning and zoning. So this is not just like affordable housing, it's a little bit more to it. But I just wanted to bring that up, and then Councilman Castellano can go ahead and give his take to help them understand, thank you.
Here Lopez, or Mayor Protem Lopez Viado. When we got this letter from Mike Griffiths from Torrance, and he sent it out to all, a ton of cities, my understanding and what I believe is that his basis had more to do with ADU-type ordinances. If you followed the, the laws this year, January of this year, the ADU ordinances in the state of California got very relaxed. I would say probably way too relaxed. And if you know the history of the ADU ordinance here in West Covina, it's been a long-debated, contentious one, hovering around the twelve thousand square foot lot size range. Now the California new laws allow the construction of an ADU on five thousand square feet, and the setbacks are very small, I think four feet, very relaxed. I think that Mike Griffiths, what, what he really wants to get support on is that we want local control on issues like that. Another example of an attempt of a law that failed this year was allowing the construction of quadplexes where single-family residences exist. That failed. But if it had passed, that would mean that if you have, if you live in a neighborhood with single-family homes, someone could level that, put up a quadplex, and there it is. So that's really more of what this is about, is not, is pushing back on the state to let cities have a say in things like that. You, you brought up, and I apologize, I forgot your name, but you brought up about affordable housing. And maybe, I don't know if Joanne is still in here, Mark could probably answer this. Pretty certain, from my recollection, of my time on the Planning Commission, the city of West Covina and every city is required to have places throughout the city where affordable housing can be placed. That, what that does, though, is that just opens up the marketplace to developers to choose if they'd like to build that. So it's not that we would block or disallow affordable housing from being built. Really, the, the question is, will a developer step up to the plate and say, yes, I want to build that? I think it'd be a good practice and exercise to familiarize yourself with some developers and ask them if they would build that, why or why not? I've been told the answer is no, because they're not in the business of losing money and subsidizing things and walking away for no good reason. Few council meetings ago, I mentioned briefly an article I read, I think it was on NBC News, about the county building homeless housing. And I think, if I remember correctly, the end cost per unit was something like six hundred and fifty thousand, maybe seven hundred and fifty. But anyway, it was egregious and in no way, shape, or form affordable. So, you know, that I think is a good example of, it's, it's not that easy to build affordable housing. And it still comes down to the private sector to build it. The city, we, we, we don't build it. We don't like secure the land, hire the contractors and build it. And even if we did, it's not like we would somehow build a unit that's a hundred and fifty grand, and there it is, it's for sale. It just doesn't work that way. Anyway, I think that's what I wanted to cover. If you have more questions, please email, call, and I hope that was helpful.
Okay, I want to local control, no matter what, okay? So I want to move the motion to approve. Do I have any other discussion?
I just want to address the same thing. As somebody who has lived here for thirty years now, it's very important to homeowners in the city that move here. They move here for the suburban feel. They move here for the single-family homes on their lots. A lot of them are moving from larger urban areas because they don't want to be on top of neighbors. They are moving away from apartments and townhomes and condos and come to West Covina as a bedroom community. And for me, there has been a huge push, not only on this issue at the state, but on many issues, to basically tell local governments, we're going to tell you what to do. You no longer have self-determination, and, you know, the city of West Covina is different than cities around us, much less, more different than cities in central California or way northern California. And to take a one-size-fits-all approach to laws regarding local zoning is just improper. That is why there are elected local bodies. I mean, quite frankly, if we have no local control, why are we sitting here? And so that is why I am in support of pushing the state to recognize that they are not the be-all and-all, that local control is important, because we are the ones who know our communities best.
Okay, very good, thank you. I, I move the motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, I have, okay, second by council, okay, Mayor Proton Lopez Viado, Rocko, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and the motion approved five-zero, we move to numbers nine, right? Okay.
The chair mayor, we need to go to item number four.
Number four-two-four is pulled already. The city manager pulled it up.
Pulled it, are we tabling it?
Yeah, he table already, he's pulled. Yeah, I would think I'm falling asleep. Okay, number nine, please.
No, this one's simple. I just, you know, I understand that it was backdated on purpose, twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen, you know, pavement management, and that it finally completed in May twenty-nine, which I'm glad our resident did say thank you for paving their streets. I just want to put in for, well, to make note that for future, I'd like to see the, all the list of all the streets that need paving and so forth, and that's about it.
I agree. This is, should be on your management report, manager report, regarding what street has been paved, okay? And, okay, and it showed before and after. Then after that, then you showing which city, uh, no, which street, we are going, what, what location, we're gonna do it. Let the resident know, okay, that their neighborhood is going to be repaid, okay? Make beautiful street. So I think it's important, that need to be shown to, to our resident, the big improvement, okay?
That's it, and then I'd like to.
Any other discussion, although I want to move the motion?
I'll move the motion to approve.
Okay, motion moved by Mayor Proton Lopez Viado, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilman Johnson, Rocko, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, motion approved five-zero, then we're going to number ten. That will be, that's pulled by Jessica. Councilmember Shoemaker, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted, and we discussed this previously, our fire department overtime is at ninety-one point four percent of what we budgeted. And so I would just like it to come back to us for a discussion on why that is and where all of the assurances that we would not be facing this type of budget amendment went.
You want the chief to come out to explain to you?
No, because there's other information. I had requested that will be.
Chief already stand by for you. You want, no?
Okay, if you want to.
Yeah. Do you want?
No, because I had requested other information. Remember, this will be coming back to us.
Oh, okay. During the call session, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we already request more information. So we, right now, I think maybe wait for all the collect information from city manager request you, so we can get all those number, okay? But maybe you can stand by, maybe other city council want to ask you. Just give me five minutes, so you don't want to ask any.
No, not.
So any council, any?
But I do have another question.
Go ahead.
Okay, the report shows that last year we had collected six point two percent of our general fund revenues, and this, by this point, and this year we've only received three point four percent. For some reason, they're calling that a decrease of two point eight percent. I do math differently, and I think that's a decrease of almost fifty percent. But part of it is the delay of the Prop A funds. I would like to know how much of this is attributed to that? And how much is it that we're actually starting to see, you know, our sales tax revenue has been decreasing, and we're starting to see that?
Good evening, council. In answer to your question, last year at the same time, I, I believe in July last year, we did the exchange for the Prop A monies. On the last council meeting, we approved that contract, and I'm waiting to get signed contracts back from Foothill Transit, because they took it to their council. And once I get that, then we will do it. It's not going to be in the full amount this year, because we got revisions of the revenue estimates from Metro. And so we're only going to be exchanging one point eight rather than the two point, I think it was two point three that was in the budget. As far as the sales tax goes, for the general fund, we haven't seen a big dip in the sales tax. And a big reason for that is a lot of the sales tax that comes in. tax, and a big reason for that is a lot of the sales tax that comes into the city from Plaza West Covina goes into the CFD, the Community Facilities District. That fund, we've seen negative sales tax because of them all being closed for so long, but fortunately, in the general fund, it's, we're holding our own there, and I'm going to keep looking at it as, you know, because TOT is done, we're going to have to revise that for the year. If I see sales tax dipping, which I haven't so far, we'll revise that, probably at mid-year, because you can get a better estimate. Right now through August, because we accrue July and August sales tax back to last year, because that's where it belongs, there's no sales tax in this year yet. But the numbers that I'm seeing are very equivalent to what we've seen in the past for July and August, so I expect September, especially now that things are opening up, we're going to see how quickly the economy recovers.
Is it possible to just get a copy of those numbers?
The revenue expenditure reports?
Yes, just so that we can...
Sure.
I know we get some of it as part of our weekly updates and things like that, but just a nice chart that we can provide to the public that, because obviously this is an area they're interested in, that shows that. And then I see that expenditures for August 2020 were down to 4.6 million, which is 6.9% compared to August 2019, where we were at 11.8%. So thank you to all of the units who took cuts. Thank you to Robin for having...
Thank you. And just to add on to that, that's with the increases that the POA and the FFA got, so we're really, really controlling our expenditures this year, and, you know, I look at those, now that I'm looking at them every month, not that I didn't before, but to bring this report and analyzing them more deeply, we'll continue to bring that back to you and be as transparent as we can, and let you know as soon as we know that there's an issue.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on. Okay, thank you so much. Just a question.
Sure.
Don't worry, I'm not going to be tough. Okay, I'm just curiosity. Okay, I'm always nice, okay? Okay, so anyway, regarding, a lot of people order online, okay, I order this and that from, okay, website, Amazon, this and that, okay, I pay taxes. How these taxes go to our city? Because I want to make sure, okay, those taxes go to us, but I have a, okay, billing address, then I have a shipping address. So how they know this going to our city, the thing I pay?
So the online sales, they go into what's known as the county pool, and it gets divvied up, and I believe it's by population, you know?
Yeah. So it's not by my address?
No.
Oh, wow.
Not for the county pool, but the county pool, again, since the pandemic has been way up, because everybody's ordering online.
Everybody order online, so we get some share coming?
We've been getting a lot from the county.
So basically, it's better shared than before, because everybody order online?
Yeah, I don't know if it's better, but...
We assume.
It's equivalent. We're holding our own in sales tax.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate. See, it's not tough, it's just very curiosity. At least I know where my tax dollars go to. Thank you. Okay, chief, okay, I, since I want to piggyback, sorry to let you running around the stair, okay, I have a piggyback question regarding overtime, okay, and clearly, remember, we talking about, okay, fill it up, okay, remember, the promise from you is, fill it up my staff, then we can cut overtime. So now, look like overtime is going to exist, so what happened, okay? Where is the promise from you, let, just fill it up? So we keep our promise, we fill it up, what we give, what you want, okay, and what is returned to the city? Yeah, go ahead.
In relation to what you said about filling up, and as you guys know, the council approved, and the city manager approved me to hire the nine positions last year, which made us fully staffed. To answer your question about overtime, with that nine fully staffed as of the date this fiscal year, we have saved $231,000 in overtime.
How much are you saving?
$231,000 this year by having those nine positions filled, which would be a total of 1.4 million if we did not fill those. Extra overtime than what we currently have expended if we did not have those nine positions filled.
So I'm kind of confused, because the question is, my understanding is, we fill all the position with a full staff, the full staffing, for the fire department, then we will cut down the majority of our time, that's what, that time we...
Correct, and we did, and through constant staffing for open positions, like I said, we have for this year, so far this fiscal year, cut down 231,000.
I know, but $231,000 compared with what original you promised.
Right.
Right now, we already go to 91%, meaning it's going to be, exist what the budget allow, so...
So as the staff report states, we've been following overtime weekly, daily, we watch it all the time, we see everything that's going on.
So the report on it has... Yeah, it's the finance director, he wants to say something, or would you please let her, since she know the number, okay? I'm sorry, chief.
I just want to explain a little bit, because the numbers, the 91%, we cut the overtime in the fire department this year drastically compared to, I think it was two-something last year. It was like, we budgeted $500,000 for the regular overtime this year, because at the time that we were preparing the budget, we were talking about alternatives for fire, and we made those assumptions that it was going to go forward. As it happens, it didn't go forward, we're still looking at it. But, you know, so we were looking at maybe doing an alternative with care ambulance, looking at county services, or looking at, you know, drastic layoffs, to be honest, in the fire department, and, you know...
All right, okay.
So that 91%, I think, if he had a budget right now of, say, 1.3, which I believe is what he requested in the budget, it wouldn't be 91% right now. So it's a little bit...
Got it. So we really have the control of overtime, although we might have an issue because the budget, okay, we approve, okay, and the revenue coming, not what be TOT, we don't have TOT tax, we don't have the full sales tax, and a lot of business still suffering, so, so, got it, okay, but we always request some information, so we can bring to council to discuss, but, okay, but thank you so much, okay, I think later on we can get more information, so we can have a discussion. Thank you, chief. Thank you. Okay, finance director, really appreciate. Okay, and do you, anybody want to move the motion? Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, just a point of clarification here. So even if we had put the 1.3 million, we're still looking at the pace right now to be 3 million. So what do you anticipate trending the overtime downward?
So as I stated, is that if we want to compare filling the positions and cutting down overtime for that, if we would still have those nine open positions, whatever overtime we spent this year would be approximately 1.4 million dollars above. This year so far, at the $519,000 expenditure for July and August, those are broken up in two separate things. One of them is accrued leave and other leaves, and other reasons why they spend it. So I separated those in two things, and the accrued leave, vacation leave, sick leave, bereavement, comp time, that amount comes to $269,000, which would have been annually 1.6 million. We'd have been pretty much right on track with the 1.3, because it fluctuates in the summer months, and we would have had less vacation, so I think we'd have been right on, right on course with the 1.3. However, we had a lot of unexpected costs this year. I had a number of IODs that are currently still out right now, for a total of 249,833, 3,900 hours of leaves related to IODs currently from July and August only. So on that pace, that's an extra 1.4 million dollars. We can't control that, we knew nothing about that. Other than the drastic measures, which aren't recommended for staffing, if we deal with, the finance director stated, the only way to control that is not have people here and run calls. We have to have people here to run the calls. So we weren't expecting to have this amount of IODs. We weren't expecting to have the Galster fire that cost us, you know, 100 hours of time. We weren't expecting, even though we did plan for the Fourth of July, that cost us a couple, you know, six grand. So those things were unexpected, especially the IOD, that's our big problem.
The rest of this will be, have to be the close session discussion, because I have huge issues with what was just said, but it falls under personnel, so I'm going to leave it alone.
Information?
Yeah.
And chief, please, control the overtime, that's what you can do, okay? We really don't want to go to some drastic, okay, thing. We really want the service, but at the same time, we need to keep the budget, okay? So help us, okay? Thank you, thank you, chief. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve this? This is approved, right? Yeah, we see in fire. Your attorney, should we, is this we see in fire, or this approval?
It's approval, because...
Adopt the resolution, you need approval.
There's a budget amendment attached.
Oh, it's approved.
Three budget amendments attached to this report.
All right.
And two of them were just, there's no dollars involved.
Thank you so much.
Fixing account numbers.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, may I have a motion, please?
Okay, Councilman Johnson, to, okay, move the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, okay, second by Councilman, okay, Castellano, and roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
No.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, okay, motion approved four one. Okay, we move to the agenda number 11. Mayor Protem Viado, okay, welcome back, chief.
Because you guys missed me, I'm here.
Thank you for the plan check survey. I know that you mentioned we used to have a part-time staff to help offset, now we don't. With these three consultant, if, for whatever reason, they are not able to, if they're still overburdened, what will occur next? Or is it just increase of cost?
What do you mean by increase of cost?
Because it says that there's times that they've been overburdened with plan check reviews, resulted in delays and turnaround times, but if it's still a continuing issue, what happens?
We'll have to try to find more consultants, but I'm confident with the three that we can do it with those.
Okay, and it's 30,000 max per consultant?
I requested POs 30,000 for one consultant, 15 for the other two.
Okay.
The other two, the 15 for each of those, actually have a number of fire departments in Southern California, so they are overburdened. The other one has more staff of inspectors and not that many fire departments. That's why I asked for that one to be our primary.
Okay, and then I was reviewing the plan check survey, and I appreciate that you have all the other cities, which majority of the cities, they do it in-house, and with only three total cities, besides Monrovia, Monterey Park, and us, we do have consultants. But why is it that for permit application fee, expedite fee, resubmit fee, they charge a $99 plus a consultant fee, while the others, they really don't? Why is that, and what are the consultant fees?
So if you look at this chart here, the bottom six are LA County Fire Department, which they do in-house. Monterey Park, Monrovia, and ourselves use the same consultants. Arcadia has in-house consultants, has in-house inspectors do their own, as well as Monrovia.
You say in-house consultant or in-house staff?
Meant in-house staff, thank you.
Staff, okay.
In-house staff. So if you look for the expedite fee, everybody has an expedite fee except for Alhambra. When I spoke to Alhambra, which, by the way, the consultant everybody uses, actually works for Alhambra, he's actually there, is they do it pretty quickly over the counter right there, and they just don't, they don't charge. They do it, they get their cost within the other, other fees.
No, but my question is, if you look, including Monrovia and Monterey Park, I know they obviously have a consultant, but during those columns, the permit, expedite, and resubmit, only West Covina charges $99 plus consultant, while the others don't, and I just wanted to know why, and what are those costs?
Is the consultant, is the consultant fee here is 12250, if you look, I'm sorry, if you look at Monterey Park, their expedite fee, is that the one you're talking about?
Monterey Park, yeah, I mean, they all have a set rate.
So we charge an extra $99 for expedite fee, because we have to physically have it, put it in the mail, send it, and pay for the shipping back and forth. Sometimes the plans are huge, and so we have, we put that burden for the expedite on the vendor for us to have to mail it back forth, else we would lose money by doing this. And then the fee for the consultant is what they charge to expedite, as well as their normal consultant.
What are those fees?
They're in the, in the fee schedule for each of the ones, I don't know them by heart, for each vendor. So basically, if you come in and you say, I want this done in seven days, we charge you the consultant fee to do it, and then the consultant fee, the consultant also charges us another fee to get it done in seven days, above and beyond their normal fee.
I understand that, but I just, the reason why I was asking, because originally, I wanted to see what our residents are paying, and I wanted to see if we are paying comparable to other cities, or are we overpaying or underpaying, which leads me back to the reason why I'd like to see an in-house. I know I did say that I wanted this to be a one-year review, so that we can compare and see how it goes. So that's why I was asking what the fees were for overcharging.
If we had an in-house employee, we would probably lose money, and I can tell you that because the cost for a full-time inspector to do plan checking is going to be more than the 60,000. Let's say we spent 60,000 this year to do plans that we actually receive and then pay the vendor. If we had an individual do that, their cost, we don't know the cost of a plans inspector through the...
We had a part-timer, is it, I mean...
We had a part-time inspector who was a 960 employee, who happened to be able to do plans, so sometimes she would do them just to help out the vendors and get it done.
Well, I mean, it is what it is. I just want to make sure that in a year, well, in one year, that we review this, the total cost of now with three consultants without the help of our own part-time, just to see how the services is being provided, if these consultants are still being overburdened, if our costs do increase, and I do like to see, you know, the cost of being in-house as well, because, I mean, obviously, with all these other cities, they have it in-house, so I don't see why, you know, why we couldn't, and then, but of course, the fees, that was, I think that's about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Shoemaker, please.
I'm going to piggyback on Mayor Protem Lopez Viado. So how do we actually charge the residents? Because when I look at these fee schedules, they're all different. So like, expediting service on KJ Consultant is actually not listed. When you look at MAK, it's 200 plus the consultant fee. We have KJ consultants that are charging us travel time. I don't see that under MAK. We have PE Consulting Group, that's $70 per hour with a minimum of one hour for each project. We have, an expedite fee for them is 125 for the first hour, and 95 for each additional hour. So when I come in and need this service, is it roulette on who I get, what I'm going to be charged?
No.
Or how is this going to work?
So the two, so M and K and P, the ones we've been using, have expertise. One does building, and the other, the other one does fire protection and fire suppression systems. They have their expertise. Even though they both can do all of it, they have their expertise, where in KJ Consultant can do all of them, and they have more staff to do them all. The other ones, we have to pay to send them to them. We have to put them in the mail, pay for that, and that comes out of the $99 application fee that we, that we, that we get from the...
I'm not worried about the chart. I'm focused on the actual agreements. And so are you saying that KJ consultants will handle one type period, even though they have the ability to handle the other types, and the other two firms will each handle their own individual thing? So we don't have a case where, let's say, MAK is unavailable, so we move it up to KJ consultants, and the person gets charged something different than they would have under MAK?
That is a possibility, depending on what the vendor can do. That is definitely a possibility, since nobody is going to be the same price, and we can't just use one vendor. It does work that way, unfortunately. We try to use their expertise, sprinkler, fire protection, fire suppression, or building.
Mr. City Attorney, help, because how can we charge different residents different things for the same service?
I need to talk to the chief about this.
We just charge, in the, it says, we just charge whatever the consultant fee is, we don't have an actual standard, it says what it is.
Well, I understand that, but I, as a resident, am going to be one teet off... Well, I understand that, but I, as a resident, am going to be one teed-off resident if I pay more for a service that my next-door neighbor pays less for. And I don't know if we can even legally do that, above and beyond the fairness. So the city attorney has just said that this will, he will need to discuss it. So I think at this point, we need to table it again.
So you want to table this?
Yeah, I do, because I need answer to whether we can.
Yeah, if we, you want to make a motion to table this to get clear information? And including, I want to piggyback, some of why you table this, okay, we want a comparison with in-house, because Arcadia, they have a local code to sell in-house, Alhambra's in-house. Okay, how many compare with how we consultant is? So we have to do a comparison. We can hire them, okay, year to year, so we, at the same time, okay, we need to. But the thing is, I agree with Councilmember Shoemaker regarding how can we charge people with a different price? Because different consultant, that is an issue. Okay, it should be, yeah, City Manager, go ahead.
I may have a question for the Chief. Chief, if you don't get these contracts approved tonight, will we be able to provide plan tech services at all?
We are not right now. We're holding our plans. We're not able to, any residents or.
So we need to, so we need to approve this so we can, okay, and this is a year-to-year, right? They'll approve one years. Okay, can we have all the equal charge? Okay, because, I don't think, yeah, I agree. We cannot have a different consultant, different charge due to difference shift. If you had, if they're, if they're doing different thing, okay, they have a different charge. But if they're doing the same thing.
Mayor Wu?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, well, different cities isn't residents within our city. So we can argue on whether we should negotiate lower prices based on the chart. So if we need somebody to prevent, to be doing fire prevention plan checks now, because we don't have anybody to do it, then I would propose that we approve the one that would be doing the plan checks and table the other two, or make it that each individual company handles their specialty so that there will be no, okay, if M A K can't handle it, it goes to KJ consultants where there may be a different price.
Want to move the motion? Go ahead.
And just one thing, I know I said I would like to review, but I also would like to know how much money these consultants made with our residents, with all these businesses in a year? Because I know you said.
The traffic report, if you go back to page, so in 2015, 16, 16, 17, 18, 18, 19, 19, 20, we.
That's how much we spent, we gave to them. But them as a consultant, the organization, how much did they make out of our residents the whole year? Because I know you said if we have it in-house, we'll lose money. But I wouldn't know that unless, I mean, if, if their fees are much higher than what we charged in-house prior those many years, I would like to know how much they actually made within that timeframe.
This is exactly what they made from us. We paid, so for example, 15, 16, we, M and K Fire Protection made 16,110 total.
From our residents, like, this is not what our city paid general fund. It's more what the residents, because you said residents cover the cost.
Correct.
Well, that includes what the residents paid to them.
Correct, so we, the city gets to keep the $99 application fee. For having the staff that does it, for any plans we have to mail or ship, that goes into, that's a revenue to the city. Any other portions, anything to do with the plan checks, is burden on the customer, and that goes directly to the consultant.
Well, that's what I wanted to know, with all the, I mean, all that cost of what they get. That's what I wanted to know.
It's all, this is exactly what it is right here.
Okay.
Each company.
Okay, okay, who want to, okay, move the motion?
Okay. Again, I need to talk to the city attorney, okay? Because on the staff report, they basically all say for fire prevention plan check services. But I want the agreements changed, or what do we need to do so that if we approve all three tonight, it's with the understanding that there is going to be no crossover? So if M A K can't handle something and KJ does have people who can do it, we're not going to move it to them for the simple fact that there's a difference in the prices.
Do you abbreviate your motion? So your motion is going to approve tonight?
Not necessarily. It's based on what the city.
Mr. Mayor, you can make, put that in your motion and direct staff, direct city attorney, city manager to amend the agreement and execute it.
That's why the motion is about.
Okay.
Approve subject two, okay, and all the further information, we don't have a legality issue.
Then I will move approval of these professional service agreements with the understanding that the contracts will be amended so that each firm has specific duties and they will stay basically in their lane. And so I don't know how else to put that.
Okay, then, then, yeah, okay. At the same time, we want the further information, including the in-house. Okay, maybe our Finance Director can see the comparison compared with other city, how many staff we need, and compare with can we pay for, by our service? So, and do I have a second?
One question for the Chief.
Go ahead.
Would, would that hurt us or residents or applicants in any way?
Yes, it would, because if we, if we handcuff ourselves saying that vendor A can only do sprinklers, and we have 100 fire protection ones coming, hoods and stuff, and we only can use vendor B for that, residents are going to have to wait because vendor B can only do so much.
We, we want efficient, we want, we want.
Right, that's why we use.
You said that M A K and P E Consulting have specific specialties that you want to use them for. So where is the crossover?
Everything if needed, but we have in the past, last few years, staff has decided, hey, we keep a certain plans for P E and certain, certain for M and K, just to keep it that way. If we did that.
Chief, I think we want to approve this, so we don't have a delay, so people have a project, we can right away send our team, the consultant over there. But I think you can talk to them, okay, to try to, everybody the same, so we can use everybody. I think.
That's what I'll try to do.
Yeah, I think $10, $20, I think they don't care, they just want the job. Okay, and if they do job, then we continue to give them a renewal, otherwise they take a hike. So, so because one year, so, okay, we have, we okay?
The issue remains, if we let all three work on everything that they're able to do, then you have some residents paying more or less than other residents.
I just say, I just mentioned to Chief, he need to make everybody the same charge.
Yeah, or, so we would need to amend the contracts where we set up, maybe set up a scale of what people charge and find out what that, what residents are charged to find out what makes it cost neutral.
Okay, okay, and it's clear, right? You got it, right? Okay, Chief, you got it, right? Okay, we just want the three, we want to give you approval so we can move on, okay? Please, okay? So in that way, we want to have similar same charge and let them to help you to negotiate. Okay, do I have a second? Second by who?
I'll second.
Second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado, okay, and Rocco, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and motion approved for one. And I think a city attorney and the Chief and City Manager clearly know, okay, the concern is we cannot charge people differently with a different consultant company, it doesn't make any sense. So they need to come out with similar charge, and that is what you want. Okay, so in that way, it's fairness, and we need to have, and regarding how they, the charge, so people understand they will get charged for certain amount, they know their budget. And another thing is our Chief of Finance, okay, to look into the in-house. Okay, let's move to agenda, I think it's the last one, right? This is the last one, number 15. We're going to have public hearing, number 15. Okay, it's about time. Man, this is the latest, this is the latest meeting we ever had, okay? See, I was thinking about, I did the perfect record, and the last, the second one, then totally. Okay, number, okay, item number 15, consideration of a resolution 2020-104 confirming a waste management agency and designating a local enforcement agency for, okay, enforcement of a solid waste management program. City Manager, okay, and Mr. Prisco, the City Assistant City Manager, you want to present the staff report, this is what you write, okay? Okay, City Manager, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I will make this quick, given the lateness of the hour. As the mayor has indicated, the item before the City Council is to reaffirm the city's Waste Management Agency and designation as a local enforcement agency. This is related to the B K K site. The city has served as the L E A since 1992, when the City Council adopted Resolution 8807, and that was affirmed by the State Integrated Waste Management Board in the summer of 1992. Fast forward, the city had served, Steve Saminiego, who is currently here in the audience, was a former city employee, he was the local enforcement agency officer, and served in that capacity for about a dozen years, then became a consultant to the city. He was replaced by an out, another outside firm, and that's when the city started having issues. In February of this year, we were informed by Cal Recycle that they intended to decertify the city as the L E A. That started negotiations with the city, and I want to thank Cal Recycle for their efforts, and particularly Steve Levine worked cooperatively with us, and we did reach a stipulated judgment, or I should say, it was a stipulation for continuation of hearing, it wasn't actually a judgment. The Council's being asked to adopt the Resolution 2020-04. What it really does is clarify the reporting structure. The L E A will now report to the police chief, or I'm sorry, the fire chief, as it says here. We will then update the enforcement program plan and the designated information package and address a number of other enforcement issues. We do think we've made very significant progress with Cal Recycle. And with the adoption of this resolution, the Council's also being asked to approve professional services contract with Rincon Environmental, which is Mr. Saminiego's firm, also a professional services agreement with Cole Huber, which has served as outside counsel. And one of the largest issues is installation of a fence along a city property for a cost of approximately $35,000, and that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Assistant City Manager. Does City Council have any question?
No questions, but nice to see you, Steve.
You want to come back to introduce yourself? Yeah, yeah, so welcome to West Covina, welcome back. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. It is nice of you to come back here to the city in the, in this new pandemic area. But anyway, I'm here at your service, and I'm ready to help and go to work and get things done for you. That's what I'm here for, so if I have any questions, please ask.
Can you give us your contact informations if you have any question?
Yes.
Provide to the City Manager, and then he, he can, okay, distribute to us with your contact information so we can talk to you, so we don't have to take too much time on our council meeting, but, so we can have some information from you.
More than happy to.
Okay, and Council, any other question, other, what, do I have a motion to approve?
I was just going to say, it's nice to put a face to a name, so, thank you, I didn't know who you were.
City Manager, you've mentioned your name so many, 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 many times.
I just hear the name.
So, welcome to show in person, sorry, we go to 11 o'clock.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to, Steve, Steve, it's real good to see you again. You know, I, I remember, you know, I was around when you worked for the city for all those years. I was around every go by B K K, and see, you're up there doing all those, what do you call them, the whales that are up there? You know, you've been doing a fantastic job up there, and it's good to see you back on the team. And like I said, I don't need this information, I got it on my cellphone. I've known Steve for many years. Good to see you, Steve.
Hey, you are privileged, I don't have, I don't have his contact information. Okay, but, but welcome, okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and Councilman Johnson made the motion to approve, and who second? Second by Councilman Casiano, okay, Rocco, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and congratulations, welcome back and join the team, okay? Make this thing happen, and we need that site safe and clean. Okay, thank you so much, welcome. Okay, approve fine zero, and we are going to the A B 1234. I don't think we have anything, do we have any council comment, any requests? I think you have a request, right? With this morning, you, meeting, you have a request? It's too late, it's 11 o'clock. Did you remember what the request we say, not the mayor, just request? Do you remember? No, you wrote it down. Yeah, you wrote it down, then I said, no, not the mayor, it's the City Council request. I thought if nobody, we just get the information right away. Did you, I don't remember either holding micro, I'm really getting old. The DJ is right, okay? Okay, I'm lucky, I only have one meeting to go. Ha, 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 okay, so, but sorry to delay to 11 o'clock, okay? Because we have such a long meeting with some agenda. Other than that, do you guys have any other thing? If you remember, just send to, I put agenda, agenda next time. Other than that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
Yep, okay, and so second, right? Okay, so, thank you so much, I'm really sorry to go to 11 o'clock, and I want to thank staff, okay, to stay so late. This has broke the record, we should, should be done with 9:30, but no matter what, okay? And I want to thank everybody watching the show, okay? And we get another thing done, be safe and good night, and meeting adjourned. Good night.